Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Let's go ahead and begin today's city council meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 20, 2022. Good evening and welcome. Tonight's 5:30 PM commencement, beginning of our closed session portion of tonight's calendar. At this time, are there any public comments?
No.
Having received none, Mr. City Manager, any updates?
Not for closed session, no.
Okay, very good. We'll now recess into our 5:30 closed session and report back at 7:00 PM.
Can I take role, Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Present.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Sharet?
Here.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Here.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Present.
Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Valdivia?
Here.
Thank you. All right. We'll return at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Church, to please lead us in tonight's invocation. And then I will lead our public in tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join us in prayer? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to pray this evening. If you bow your heads and close your eyes with me. God Almighty, I pray your blessings upon this meeting. I pray that the blessings of unity and peace be here tonight. I pray that we feel your presence during this meeting. And Father, our leaders need your wisdom to build this city. You are Creator of all things, my Lord. And I pray for Mayor Valdivia, City Council, and everyone here in attendance. Father, your word says, writes in Matthew 6:33, "Seeking the kingdom of God first in all his righteousness, and that all things shall be added unto you." So, before this meeting starts, we ask you first, let there be reverence during this meeting, let there be order during this meeting, and let there be peace during this meeting. Father, you take control of this meeting, for we know that it is needed here today. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much, Chaplain Paul Luhon of Victory Outreach Church. Thank you very much for your ministry here to our community. And also, I want to send my deep appreciation to the Luhon family. Thank you very much for your prayers over the years. You visited me in the mayor's suite at City Hall, and we really appreciate our police Chaplain Corps for your ministry here in our community. At this time, I'll recognize the city clerk, please to call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Present.
Mayor Protem?
Here.
Councilmember Sharet?
Here.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Here.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Present.
Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
And Mayor Valdivia?
Present.
Thank you very much, Ms. City Clerk. At this time, I will ask our city attorney, please, to report out any findings.
Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the public, we did have two closed-session items this evening while direction was giving, giving towards settlement. When those become final, they would be reportable, so we do not have any reportable action at this moment.
Thank you very much, Ms. City Attorney. At this time, we'll recognize our City Manager, Mr. Field.
Thank you. Good evening. In lieu of the standard report that we give, there's no sense pretending that we did not have a fairly serious incident here in San Bernardino. We have done, we have prepared a brief on, on video of the occurrences that happened on Saturday. And so, we would, in lieu of my report, we're going to go ahead and play the brief, which was prepared for us by our police chief, Darren Goodman. So, if we could please.
Hello. I'm here to present the findings. This video is filed by Officer Paul Schuh at Curry Street, San Bernardino. Our goal is to be transparent and to share as much information as possible. It's a privilege, Mr. Field. Due to the rapid nature of the hustle and the hurry of the streets, on Saturday, July 16, 2022, I have filed a complaint with the Department of Public Safety. To inform you of the current investigation, we have investigated several officers, and have followed up in an unlawful vehicle, had pursuing information on citizen and worker that are black and male, who were behind and sitting in the park. This is located in the 400 block of West Highland Avenue. As officers arrive, we spot two men, who are clearly in search of their bodies. Additionally, several community members, Milwaukee, and New York City, have been arrested outside the United States. One of them has later identified as a 23-year-old law-abuse hacker. Saw the officer being hit, holding on to his hands. And Karen Block reported the officer's car. The officer tested their vehicle, gave them verbal commands, but immediately ran towards the parking lot with the gun and the weapon. Officer briefly chased after him, but seeing that he had an outbreak, they believed he was using a police vehicle as cover to shoot at him. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and Adams transferred to the law-abuse vehicle, died in court. Hey, officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Adams, a black man, led his horse, he was seen with a roundgun, and was hit with a gun. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Adams, a black man, led his horse, he was seen with a roundgun, and was hit with a gun. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Adams, a black man, led his horse, he was seen with a roundgun, and was hit with a gun. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Adams, a black man, led his horse, he was seen with a roundgun, and was hit with a gun. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day? Got any? Did you hear that conversation, lady? I'm here. Second suspect, the same in custody, and subsequently released to the justice. Unfortunately, it's a one-time, with a recent association, and I have two, and I have two officers. The officer saw Adam look over his left shoulder, because he still looked like he was dead. There, by Sanders, where the officer fired a pointed gun, one of the officers fired a gun at the driver. Officer quickly made his getaway, and I'm here. Officer, you okay, man? Hey. Hey, you okay? Hey, what's your day?
Who is dead? What do you tell his mother? What do you tell his family? What if he had children? That feeling is what we're gonna carry. And what are we supposed to do with that? Are we supposed to sit here and just expect things to just change by themselves? No. People elected me to change things. I grew up watching politicians say nothing, do nothing, and ultimately be nothing. So I came here to be you. When you look up on this dice, I hope that you've seen me. I hope that you see you. And I hope that you know that people actually care about you now. Because historically, it hasn't felt like that. I know I've never felt like that in my entire life. I didn't even want to run. When I was a young man in this city, I wanted to be a politician. And then life happened. I became an adult and I realized, for what? And still, this city inspired me to run for office, to sit here and to translate things that you felt like you would never get the answers to. And so that's what I'm doing. That's all I can do. And so I ask for your patience, chief. I do wish you good luck. And I understand the role that you have to play in this. But ultimately, we've got a lot of questions about training practices, and I'm sure you do too, unfortunately, come to this department new. Training practices, is this how we operate? If we show up to a scene like that, is it normal for an unmarked car to be the first responder? How many informants do we have across the city? This is sure, special investigations, I understand. But the reality is, when the autopsy comes out, ultimately, I imagine, we'll see bullet holes in his back. And so my condolences again to Rob Adams' family. Have a heavy heart. I told my mom, you picked one hell of a meeting to come to. But I hope, I hope we're doing it right. And second, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out for the street vendor and day labor worker center. It's time, right? It's long overdue, long overdue, long overdue. Everyone in this room, I imagine, at one time or another, has purchased something from a street vendor. When you went to purchase that thing, did you ask if they had permits? No. But the reality is, they didn't really have avenues to get the legal permits. So instead, they've been criminalized. I'm not afraid to say that. Sure, we have to do enforcement action, but I don't tell people to go arrest people and pick up carts. But they still are doing it in this city. And so it's time to educate, to create a space where people feel protected first and foremost, to get that information from a trusted person who they see themselves in. The same way that I hope that you can see me up here, is that I hope that people come ultimately to see the street vendor and day labor worker center, which has done in other communities, come to fruition. So that at the end, ultimately, my dream, hypothetically seeing this, was that in the end, people would have a legal permit in the cart that they need to be up to county code as a graduation gift. We need to be funding entrepreneurship. That's what this is. People are painting it like it's a separate part of our society. You drive past them all the time. They're your neighbors. These are your friends. These are your family. These are people. Thank you. These are people. And so it's way past time, and I know I talk a lot, so I'll end there, but thank you for coming.
All right, thank you. Councilman Shrek.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna pass on my announcements tonight.
Okay, very good, sir. Councilman Figueroa.
Thank you, sir. I have, I was asked by the Rancho West Neighborhood Association to just announce that their next meeting will be, let's see, July 28th, Thursday at 6:00 PM. The address is 445 South State Street. So that's, that'll be their next meeting there. And also, the Inland Empire Senior Games are gonna be starting pretty soon as well. Get the dates. It'll be spread out through September 23rd through October 7th. There'll be 5K, 10K walk-run, a billiard tournament, bowling tournament, cornhole tournament, golf tournament, pickleball tournament, softball tournament, swimming tournament, tennis tournament, all kinds of different tournaments. And it's all on different dates. So, for seniors, please, if you're interested, visit the senior services website for the City of San Bernardino. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Abara, second ward.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be speaking in English and Spanish. Voy a hablar en ingles y español. Events that I was part of this, this past month were a lot of community meetings. For those who don't know, for example, we had the Paris Hill and Valencia Neighborhood Association meeting on July 13th, Wednesday, which was last week. Also, for those who don't know, we, we do have an emprendedor graduation every eight weeks in our city. This is money that us, the council members, are approving to educate those who wish to become street vendors in our city. We passed an ordinance back in 2019. We've had workshops. There should, if anything, I want to encourage anybody who wants to be a street vendor to please attend these courses. It's free at no charge to residents of the City of San Bernardino. Ahora voy a hablar en español, and las vacaciones que tuvimos, tuvimos muchas juntas con la comunidad. Una que atendí fue la asociación de vecinos de Paris Hill y de Valencia, la semana pasada, el miércoles. La semana pasada también, el julio 11, hubo una graduación del programa emprendedor. La clase fue prove- prove- nosotros pusimos dinero hacia ese programa para cualquier persona que quiera ser un vendedor ambulante en nuestra ciudad. Esta es unas clases de ocho semanas gratis, sin costo a los residentes de la ciudad de San Bernardino. En el año 2019 aprobamos una ordenanza de cómo aplicar para ser vendedor legalmente en nuestra ciudad, desde el 2019. So yo los voy a, los quiero... Dirigir, no, no dirigir. Bueno, quiero, quiero, quiero que se animen a tomar esos cursos con el Consulado de México. Son gratis, son de ocho semanas. Nosotros pagamos por esas clases. Les enseñan de principio a final cómo ser su propio emprendedor. Tenemos oportunidades para ustedes. And then the last thing I want to say is, my condolences to the family of the young man who was, who lost his life. I, in the second ward, have become aware of several bodies also being dropped off around the second ward. They were killed somewhere else and dropped off around the second ward. So just know that we have a lot of people that were losing in our city. También quiero decirles del crimen. Tuvimos un joven que ya perdimos la semana pasada. En mi, en mi distrito solamente han visto varios cuerpos de personas fallecidas, asesinadas en otros lugares y dejadas en partes de mi distrito. Tenemos muchas vidas en peligro en nuestra ciudad. Les pedimos, por favor, unión. Estamos todos trabajando con ustedes. We're all working together, you guys. Do not see us at the end of me. We are here for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ted Sanchez, sir?
Yes, so I want to talk about two things. So my, my district is kind of divided right down the middle by the 215 freeway, and there's good things happening on both sides of my district. So on the west side, Casa Ramona, the old community center campus, the historic community center campus on 7th Street, was tragically burned down. It's acres of smoldering pile of toxic waste that's been there for almost two years now. And there's been very little talk about it, but I've been working behind the scenes really hard with a former council member, council member Esther Estrada, to find federal funding to clean that mess up. And I think we've been able to secure recently, between, between Esther Estrada and city staff, I want to thank Cheryl, who helped me draft a letter that went to the, the granting agency that we were able to, to be awarded several million dollars, not the city, but Casa Ramona, to clean up that mess. I know a lot of residents there really suffer in silence, and most times, they don't get, you know, they're, they don't get to speak out here like, like other people do on certain issues. But that, that is something that is moving before us, and I'm hoping we can resolve that problem pretty soon. On the east side of my district, Secum Lake, over the last two years, has been transformed. It is a beautiful park now, and it's a park that serves a community where the average household income is less than $20,000 a year. That's not individual income. That's household income. These people make, these people make very, very little money. They don't get to vacation in Europe in the summers, and they don't get to go skiing in the mountains in the winter. Without this park, they really don't have anything. And we received a threatening letter from the ACLU that they're upset that we've been able to clean that park up and, and give it back to the residents, again, who, without this park, don't have very much. And the reason I bring this up is because I think sometimes we need to remember the people in the middle, the people who suffer quietly. What I remember is, in high school, I had an English teacher, and she had a class of 30, 40 students. And there was one student who was especially bad. He was in and out of, I think, juvenile hall, was in a lot of trouble, and the teacher made it her mission to try to save him. And that was honorable mission to do that, but she did it at the expense of the rest of the class. She ignored just about everyone else. And I remember once, and it, it scarred me, I think, because I remember once asking for help from her on an assignment, and she said, "I don't have time for you. I'm working with, with this student," who she was trying to save. And the rest of the, the rest of those students, the rest of the 31, 32 students, suffered that year in that class because she ignored them. She ignored them because she was on this mission to save this one individual. And so I want you to know that I want to keep an eye on everyone. In my capacity as a council member here, I want to represent those people who come out here to speak, speak their minds and want to, to, to advance their, their goals. But I'm also here for the people who quietly suffer at home in, in the poorest district of the, of a very poor city in California. And so I'm here for you guys, and my number's out there. You can always reach out to me. I'm here to listen, and I'm here to try to fight for you guys. All right? That's it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor? I got one more comment.
Go ahead.
Okay, one more comment. I'm sorry. I don't see him here tonight, but I want to recognize Harry Hatch. Harry Hatch is not currently serving as a commissioner for our city, but he is a very involved resident of the city who wants to, the well-being of everybody in our city. I am going to be working diligently with our city staff to give him a proper recognition here at the city council, because he helped us with the fireworks ordinance, something that was years in the planning and fixing. So if you, not sure this year, but in previous years, recently, we have had less amounts of fireworks in our city. We have a huge enforcement going on, but we still, nevertheless, we still have the fireworks, but we are working towards fixing that issue that we're having. And I, he's a great example of a citizen being engaged in our community. So I will be working, like I said, once again, closely with our city staff to properly recognize him at one of our council meetings. Thank you, Harry Hatch, for all that you're doing for us.
Okay, thank you. I want to encourage our San Bernardino community, those listening via YouTube and our audience, on Saturday, July 23rd, at 7:30 PM, I welcome all members of our San Bernardino community and our residents, business owners, to join us festivities at the San Bernardino International Airport. What a great opportunity to celebrate the first-time-ever commercial passenger air service. We'll have a beer garden, taco gardens, and a festive celebration. That's this Saturday, Saturday, July 23rd, at 7:30 PM at our San Bernardino International Airport. For more information and details, we ask members of the public, please register in RSVP. There'll be a concert and a closure of the, this will be the last time that you're, will be able to walk the terminals before we hand over things to the TSA. So join us this Saturday, July 23rd, 7:30 PM, at the San Bernardino International Airport. Lots of good fun there for the family, and we encourage you to, your participation. Also, on Thursday, August 4th of 2022, just about three weeks, we will be celebrating our first inaugural flight from San Bernardino International Airport to San Francisco International Airport, the first-time-ever commercial passenger air service. What a great honor it is. My wife and I and the children will be aboard first flight, and it's an exciting opportunity to celebrate first-time-ever commercial passenger air service from San Bernardino International Airport. I want to encourage you, please, buy your tickets on breezeairways.com, go to flySBD.com and support this great business opportunity. The impacts are substantial. Nearly $55 million of regional impact to our community and to this region because of this new commercial launch of passenger air service, and I'm really excited about that. At this time, we will reorder, at the request of our staff, the presentations of tonight's portion. We will then have a presentation and a recognition by Councilmember Reynoso, and then we will go into the public comment portion of tonight's council meeting. With that, I will turn it over to Councilmember Reynoso of the 5th District to recognize Citizen of the Month, Robert Segura.
So I know you've heard these before, and they read the really long script. Robert Segura, first and foremost, has been, well, I know in my still respect and call him Mr. Segura, but Robert Segura has been a father figure in my life since I was about 14 years old. Me and his son just so happen to be best friends. We have been forever. And I always got to watch somebody who didn't talk a lot, but instead acted. And he served and helped people get back on their feet for years, worked here in the city. And Robert Segura is somebody who has always shown pride in the city of San Bernardino, has always made it known through his actions, by what he contributes, not only to his own yard, but to his neighborhood, about the importance of actually giving a damn about where you live. And he's been somebody who has taught me a lot of discipline through action, by watching him, by watching how he is with his family, how he's so loving, incredible grandfather now, and he's been a great father to not only his son, but to me as an extended son. And so I want to acknowledge Mr. Robert Segura, if he'd come up here. He's a man of few words. I told him, you didn't have to say much. You didn't have to say anything if he doesn't want to, but I want to acknowledge Robert Segura. As, as July 2022's Citizen of the Month for the City of San Bernardino.
I just want to dedicate this to all the citizens of San Bernardino, hardworking to keep this community and this city great, and for the betterment of the city. God bless the residents of San Bernardino.
Okay, congratulations, Mr. Segura. Thank you for your commitment to our community, and we appreciate you, and thank you. At this time, we will now transition to the public comment of tonight's meeting agenda, and we will, the cutoff time has been so stipulated at 7:15. In-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers. We will have two speaker podiums available, so when I call your name, if you would please stand in the bullpen on the wall, please, that way we can transition in a more expeditious and fast manner. We will go with agenda comments, I'm sorry, comments on the agenda first, and then we will have our business calendar. There's several business calendar items on tonight's calendar, and then we will then transition to items not on the agenda. So I have them marked accordingly, so items on the agenda will be first, business calendar in session for, second, and then we'll transition to items not on the agenda, which will be at the tail end of this meeting. At this time, in-person speakers will be heard first, followed by remote speakers. If you're speaking remotely, please mute any devices to avoid feedback, and the city clerk will then call you once upon you're recognized. At the end of the verbal public comments, our city clerk will then read any written comments per their ADA accommodation and request. At this time, we will go ahead and call members of the public, Sue Stevens, Mike Hartley, Sean, that's all I have, Sean, Ward 2, and David McCamick and Ruth from Poncho Vegans. Sue Stevens, you're up. Leslie Stevens, welcome. Followed by Mark Hartley, Sean, and David McCamick. Stevens?
I'm Leslie Stevens. I'm a board member for the San Bernardino Area Chamber of Commerce, Honorable Counsel. On June 30th, the San Bernardino Area Chamber of Commerce was honored and privileged to present our 44th Law Enforcement Recognition Dinner at the Elks Club in San Bernardino, where the dedication and bravery shown by officers by the California Highway Patrol, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, the San Bernardino County Police Department, the San Bernardino Community College District Police Department, the San Bernardino Unified School District Police Department, the San Bernardino County District Attorney's Office, and the San Bernardino Police Department K-9 Unit was honored for their dedication to the community they serve and the bravery and integrity. It was nice to see Councilmember Sanchez, Torres, Figueroa, the city manager, and his staff, and of course, the mayor in attendance. In light of the tragic events this past weekend, the Chamber of Commerce wholly supports our Chief of Police, Darren Goodman, and requests that the city council do the same in backing an individual who has demonstrated over time that he is a man of honor. Chief Goodman is committed to justice and the truth, staunchly loyal to both his community he serves and the officers he leads. San Bernardino is indeed fortunate to have a police chief with such a fine reputation and proven integrity. We anticipate that the San Bernardino Police Department's investigation and the independent investigation by the District Attorney's Office will be allowed to proceed, and that justice will unveil, ultimately prevail. The Chamber of Commerce is inspired by the transparency upon the final results and the investigation before making any conclusions which may have a negative impact upon all stakeholders in our city. We also ask the San Bernardino community wait upon final results of the investigation before forming any conclusions which may have a negative impact upon all stakeholders in our city. The Chamber would also like to let you know, we will be having grand openings at two new businesses, City Way, the PAX Center, Saturday, June 30th, 9:30 AM, at 1650 Southeast Street, Suite E, where festivities until 2:00 PM, and the Nurses Pub, Thursday, August 4th, 468 West 5th Street.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Correction, is that July 30th? You said June 30th.
Yes, it's June, it's July.
July 30th, okay.
And, and the dog show's coming back for five more years.
Thank you.
And now we're stealing business.
All right, let's move on to Mike Hartley, followed by Sean, David McCamick, please.
Mr. Reynoso, since your mother is here tonight, I will speak to you in two weeks, to say her from what I have to say to you. I am here tonight, one, to talk about the planning commission okaying more apartments on Sterling. I have talked about apartments in San Bernardino before. We need a moratorium on apartments, not build more. More apartments means we need more police and we need more code enforcement, and that is something we don't have. So I'm against these apartments. I'm against all apartments, all apartments. And if we need to take some down, then let's take some down. And the next thing, in my neighborhood, a girl, Kazarra Banks, a black girl, 22 years old, with a one-year-old child, had her brains blown out across the street from my house. That, to me, is also sad. All the murders in this city are sad. So we need more police, not less, and every time the police do something, they don't need to be criticized. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Sean. Sean here?
I'm reading for Sean. She's my constituent.
Okay.
Can I, um, city attorney, can I read from here? Or do I need? Okay.
Go ahead. You're recognized for three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dear City Council, as a resident of the city, I wish to thank the San Bernardino Police Department and San Bernardino City Code Enforcement for checking the sidewalk vendors for the proper permits per our city ordinance. Curious as to the permitting process...
I'm sorry, Ms. Abara, is this items for after the agenda? We'd be happy to read that after, when, when we call on you.
No, this, you guys had for the work center, not for the companies.
This is, I'm gonna recognize it as items not on the agenda, and that will be after the meeting, and we'll be happy to read that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms., Mr. McCamick, David McCamick, followed by Ruth and Wendy McCamick. Mr. McCamick.
Okay, before I speak, I would like to give a copy of the list to the city manager. This is on item three, and it's regarding officers of the SBPOA regulations. Renew, I'm sorry, renew, renegotiations, I'm sorry. Okay, I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen, property owner, and a resident whose business has been here since 1983, in the same area and the same city, 39 years. I used to, with my employees, across the street, go bowling, banking, eating, partying, and buy ice cream, hardware, buy hardware, clothes, and shoes, all on Highland Avenue. Today, west of Highland Avenue, there is major banking, like Bank of America, Chase Bank, Wells Fargo, restaurants, Georges, El Pollo Logo, McDonald's, KFC, Subway, Burger King, and other mom-and-pop businesses. In the past few days, has been the final straw. Again, there's been a shooting on Highland Avenue. I'm sure there, you are not shocked, as murder is almost an everyday occurrence, making it nearly impossible to give customers a feeling of security and safety. Our main problem, as I see it, is that we have to, we have too, too many illegal pot shops, dispensaries. The law, the law is, you must have a city and state license, and it cannot be within 600 feet of a residence, schools, parks, or churches, yet they are currently existing all over the city illegally within those boundaries, all 97 of them. And lack, and the, and the lack of revenue, and they're all fighting for territory. And the lack of revenues are clearly, the illegal dispensaries do not add to the city coffers. So dispensary desperately needed to protect the public. We need those city coffers to overcome some of the problems that we have, as you see. I need a response from everyone on the daisies, including the city manager, police chief, and city attorney, and elected officials, as to whether continuing to, and continuing to ignore these lawbreakers is a declaration of our oath of office...
Thank you, sir.
...office, and as many others as in this town say yes.
Thank you, Mr. McCamick. Thank you.
Do I hear our guest?
Your time is up, sir.
Do you understand the law?
Mr. McCamick?
I'm asking you, do you understand the law?
Mr. McCamick, your time is up.
Do you understand the law? I'm just asking a question.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Do all of you understand the law?
Our next speaker is Ruth.
I'm pissed.
And followed by Wendy McCamick. Okay, is Ruth here? Ruth? Is that you, ma'am? Okay, great. Thank you. Followed by Wendy McCamick. And Doug Cameron.
Hi, my name is Ruth. I am the owner of Poncho Vegans. I am here for my inner eight-year-old little girl. I have been street vending. My dad is here. He has taught me everything I know. I'm here for my community, for my people, for my raza. We are not criminals. We are vendors. We are people trying to feed our families. Thank you. Enough is enough of criminalizing. We are here to stand up for ourselves. We need a resource center. I understand the dangers of street vending. I've been in the food industry. I've also been in a suit and coat, just like you. I'm speaking to every single one of you. I am tired of walking in shame. I am here with my head held up high to speak before you guys, and for all these people who do not have a... who do not have a voice. I am done with it. We need a resource center. I know the dangers of it, but that's why we need to educate people. I was able to receive my TFF permit, I was able to pop up because I had the help of another fellow comrade. Joseph Agana taught me what I had to do. Why can't we teach? Why can't we uplift our community instead of shaming them? These people, all they have is their taco carts, and you send people out to take them away from them? How are they supposed to feed their family? Let's approve them with the proper equipment, let's teach them, let's help them. I would love to help anybody learn the resources, find websites, and be here for them. Esto es para mi gente, no es para que estemos criminalizando-nos, que nos vean como personas que nos estén arrestando. Somos familia, somos padres, somos hijos, y estamos aquí por nuestros derechos.
Thank you, Wendy McCamick. Ms. McCamick, followed by Doug Cameron and Gary Young. Ms. McCamick?
Item number three is related to SBPOA negotiations, SBPOA and other bargaining unit negotiations. I'm former Councilwoman Wendy McCamick, who fought for public safety from the beginning. Forty years between our two businesses on the same street. We spend the lion's share of our time on Highland Avenue. No one funded our entrepreneurship 39 years ago. Through blood, sweat, and tears, we have succeeded to this day. Buildings are paid off. Long story. This past spring, we saw 2,400 tax clients in our office. Many of them local residents and constituents of every single one of you. The crime issue recently has been percolating for quite some time, and we all know it. This is the worst it has been since the early 90s. Fifty-three by halfway through the year is unacceptable. To continue to allow illegal dispensaries to operate, which attracts gangs, robberies, guns, and murder, is unacceptable. Not only is it unacceptable, it's against the law. To continue to allow those to operate will just continue to degrade the neighborhoods for which and from which many of you live. We personally know, too, how to and did obtain a legal dispensary license. Yes, it was expensive, very bureaucratic, took a very long time, but so should everyone else be required to if we did. There is no revenue to be had by the illegal dispensaries, but a major drain on resources, as we all know. To allow them to operate within 600 feet of schools, churches, or parks is, again, unacceptable and should not be tolerated. Some of you electeds have abdicated your authority to the City Manager. With all due respect, Mr. City Manager, however, he cannot be held accountable by the voters. Let me say that again, he cannot be held accountable by the voters. You all can be, and you all know that I was held accountable by the voters. At this point, Mr. Alexander, your constituents' lives depend upon this fix, not your platitudes, not your photo ops. Chief Goodman, welcome, sir. What is the plan citywide? We pray for you, and we pray for the families of the victims of the City of San Bernardino.
Great, thank you. Doug Cameron, Doug, Mr. Cameron, welcome, sir, go ahead. Gary Young, followed by Casey Daly, Fannelli Milan, and Alejandro Rodriguez. As I call your name, if you would please do us a favor and stand up, and let's get going here. Mr. Cameron, go ahead.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm also here to discuss item number three on the agenda having to do with the SBPOA negotiations. I know that there's, in reviewing the agenda tonight, it appears that there is a lot of business as usual taking place by this council. What we're seeing taking place in this community is no longer business as usual. I moved to this community in 2017. Within a year, my automobile was destroyed parked in front of my office by a 19-year-old drug dealer who was never given a ticket or citation. He destroyed three automobiles. I was denied an opportunity to receive any type of victim assistance, even as a senior citizen, because the San Bernardino County District Attorney refused to prosecute this individual for a crime. It's okay in San Bernardino to destroy property of other people. There is no criminal offense. I've spoken recently with members of the San Bernardino Police Department, the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department, the California Highway Patrol. I speak with security guards that work all night trying to protect the gas stations that are open 24 hours a day, and are privy to watching vans bringing members of street homeless and destitute people from northern California cities and dropping them off in the communities of Rialto, Fontana, and San Bernardino on a regular basis. You can speak to these people at night, and they can tell you what takes place in this community at night, which I suggest all of you take some time to do. In 2017, I live in the area near where the shooting took place Saturday. 2017, I could walk to the coffee shop in the morning without having to worry about being run down in the intersection while trying to cross the street by a kid driving a hot car 50 to 100 miles an hour through the traffic intersection against the light. That's normal occurrence. Speaking with the law enforcement people here, their perception is they're wasting their time trying to enforce the law because the San Bernardino County District Attorney will not prosecute. It's a revolving door, you pick them up, you take them off, you drop them off. We're sitting trying to have breakfast in the morning, watching people defecate and urinate all over the streets of Highland and Baseline. It's a disgrace. This community stinks. Leave town for two or three days, come back in town, the first thing you notice is the community stinks. It has a stench about it. I would recommend to you that you pass a resolution and send it to the San Bernardino District Attorney, and suggest that he begin enforcing the law. Number two, you have a fortune that you're spending on vehicles driving around San Bernardino City, brand spanking new. I would recommend that you take the money, instead of spending it on new vehicles, you put it in traffic control systems with video cameras...
Thank you, Mr. Cameron, thank you, sir, your time is up. Thank you. Casey Daly, followed by Gary Young. Mr. Daly, you recognized, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, my name's Casey Daly, I live at 144 East Third Street in downtown. Uh, I'm actually here tonight, and it's a heavy meeting, probably on the lightest item then, but I do wanna talk about item number four, which is the consideration for the demolition of Carousel Mall. I've lived and owned my property for over 10 years in downtown, and I drive past Carousel Mall every day, whether I'm getting on the freeway or going anywhere. And it's, I've been waiting and waiting and waiting for something to happen, and we've talked about transformation and transforming San Bernardino for a long time. The only way that we can really transform downtown is through a physical transformation, and that's gotta include the demolition of the mall. It's gotta go, we've gotta start from scratch, we've gotta have the shopping, the vending, all of those opportunities in downtown. That's how we can start to actually make some progress in our city. So, um, with that, thank you.
Sir, thank you. Gary Young, Gary, are you here? Gary Young. All right, let's move on to Fannelli Milan, Alejandro Rodriguez, Yenny, Yenny Ruiz, are you here? Okay, we'll move on. Brian Sanchez, Brian, are you here? Brian? Okay, let's go ahead. Okay, let's go ahead and get him in, Brian Sanchez, and Olga Flores. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Valdivia, members of the council, city staff and community members. My name is Fannelli Milan, I'm the Ie. Community Organizer for the Pomona Economic Opportunity Center, and I'm also a concerned community member. I'm here to submit 844 signatures in support of item 36. I would like to file that now, if I may do so. Thank you. Also, how do we get here? Brief recap. We understand that the fight for a worker's center began in November of 2021, when close to 25 day laborers and street vendors were targeted by the San Bernardino Police Department operation. Many were ticketed, and some had their work vehicles impounded, and at least one person was arrested. However, we have to recognize that the struggle goes back to 2019, where, and we would not be here today talking about the possibility of a worker's center had it not been for street vendors organizing and demanding respect for their rights in these past years. A few months ago, we met with Councilmember Ibarra and the representative of the corner where the police operation happened, the corner where our workers gathered for work. We also met with Councilmember Ben Reynoso, who helped us add this to the agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Reynoso, for your support. Also, last week, we met with San Bernardino City officials to do a walkthrough of our main office in Pomona. And lastly, last week, we also met with Councilmember Alexander, and look, and we look forward to creating an inclusive environment for all community members to benefit from our worker's center. We listened to your feedback, and we are considering that. I just wanna, once again, I wanna thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager, I have a question for staff. Is the eight o'clock, it is the eight o'clock hour, are these, uh, public hearings noticed for eight o'clock? Public hearing, items six to 11.
They can't be heard before eight o'clock, I believe? So they're noticed for eight o'clock or anytime thereafter?
Well, is that a yes or no? I just need to know if they're noticed for eight o'clock.
Noticed for eight o'clock.
They are?
Or anytime thereafter.
Okay, all right. Uh, let's go ahead and go into public hearing mode then, sensing that they are noticed for eight o'clock, let's go ahead and begin. These are items number six, public hearing on annexation number 17 to Community Facilities District 2019-1. The recommendation is there before you, it's a six-fold recommendation. I ask that staff, or I'm sorry, the public patiently wait, we do have a public hearing on this item. The public hearing is to consider annexation proceedings and elections for City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District number 2019-1 Maintenance Services, and the annexation number 17 here is now open. Do any of the council members wish to hear the staff report? Hearing none and seeing none? Do any members of the council have any questions of staff or wish to make any comments? We will now receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak and address this matter on item number six. Each person may address the City Council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slip to the City Clerk. Are there any members of the city audience here in our auditorium wishing to address on item number six? Seeing none, and sensing that there is no public comment, we will move on. Ms. City Clerk, is there any written protests?
There are, I have received zero written protest.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within annexation number 17 of Community Facilities District 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number 17 of Community Facilities District number 2019-1.
The time being approximately 8:04 p.m., I now declare the public hearing closed. May I now have a motion of the members of the City Council to adopt Resolution number 2022-106 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino?
New to approve.
Second.
A motion by Charette with a second by Figueroa of the calling of an election to submit to the qualified electors the question of levying special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District number 2019-1. The motion is as read into the record by Charette and Figueroa on the motion and the second. Are there any further discussion from members of the council? Otherwise, Ms. City Clerk, any objections to this? Any members of the City Council wishing to register a objection?
Mayor, for these items, we have to do a voice call.
Okay, very good. If you would, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Just one moment, please. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. May I have a motion now to adopt the Resolution number 2022-107 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, declaring the election results from the annexation of Community Facilities District number 2019-1 of Maintenance Services, annexation number 17. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ibarra with a second by Mayor Protam Figueroa. Are any final further discussion points from members? The City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Now, I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title, Ordinance Number MC-1582 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending the Ordinance Number MC-1522 in levying special taxes to be collected during the fiscal year 2223, to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of landscaping, street sweeping, lighting, water quality improvements, graffiti, street sweeping, parks and trail maintenance, a reserve fund for capital replacement improvements, and the administrative expenses thereof with respect to the City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District number 2019-1. Is there a motion? Motion? Motion by Charette, second, by Mayor Protam Figueroa. Any final comments or questions? If not, call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, very good. At this time, we have now concluded item number six. And for the record, Ms. City Attorney and others in viewing audience, I do have a conflict on the following items, and I will introduce those orally as we speak. And those conflicts, I will leave the room and delegate authority to our Mayor Protam in my stead. Mr. Mayor Protam, upon conclusion, if you just text me back, then I'll come back in session. The items are as follows, item number seven, item number eight, item number 10, item number 11, consent calendar items number 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, due to campaign contributions.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven. This is the public hearing to consider annexation proceedings and elections for City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District number 2019-1. Annexation number 20 is now open. Do any council members wish to hear the staff report? Hearing none. Do any members of the council have any questions of staff or wish to make any comments? Hearing none. We will now receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the City Council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slip to the City Clerk. Has the, I'm sorry, has the City Clerk received any written protests?
I have received zero written protests.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within the annexation number 20 of Community Facilities District number 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register Voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number 20 of the Community Facilities District number 2019-1.
Okay. I now declare the public hearing closed. The time being, 8:10 p.m. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution number 2022-1-116 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, calling an election to submit to the qualified electors the question of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities Districts number 2019-1? Motion by Councilmember Charette?
Second.
Segmented by Councilmember Ibarra. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for the vote. Ms. City Clerk.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-117 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, declaring election results for Community Facilities District Number 2019-1? Motion by Councilmember Charette?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Ibarra. Is there any further discussion? None? Ms. City Clerk, please, we have the vote.
Really quickly, I need to read this section. The official ballots have been opened and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot, and the election is now closed. Now calling the vote, Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title only an ordinance number MC-1586 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending ordinance number MC-1522 in levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2022 through 2023 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of landscaping, lighting, water quality improvements, graffiti, streets, street sweeping, parks, and trail maintenance, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to the City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District Number 2019-1. Is there a motion? Motion by, motion by Councilmember Charette, seconded by Councilmember Ibarra. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number eight. The public hearing to consider annexation proceedings and elections for City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District Number 2019-1. Annexation number twenty-three is now open. Do any council members wish to hear the staff report? Hearing none. Do any members of the council have any questions of staff or wish to make any comments? Hearing none. We will now receive comments, protests, and questions from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of three minutes. Please submit your speaker slip to the city clerk. Has the city clerk received any written protest?
I have not received any written protest.
Okay, Ms. City Clerk, are there any persons registered to vote within the annexation number twenty-three of Community Facilities District Number 2019-1? If so, how many registered voters are there?
The County of San Bernardino Register voters has certified that there are no registered voters within annexation number twenty-three of Community Facilities District Number 2019-1.
Okay, thank you. I now declare the public hearing closed. The time being eight thirteen PM. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-118 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, calling an election to submit to qualified electors the question of levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number 2019-1? Is there a motion? A motion, a motion by Councilmember Ibarra?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Charette. Is there any further discussion? No, hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
The official ballots have been opened and all votes are in favor of the proposition presented on the ballot, and the election is now closed.
Thank you. May I have a motion to adopt resolution number 2022-119 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, declaring election results for Community Facilities District Number 2019-1? Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Charette, seconded by Councilmember Alexander. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I would now ask for a motion to waive further reading and introduce by title only an ordinance number MC-1587 of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Bernardino, California, amending ordinance number MC-1522 in levying special taxes to be collected during fiscal year 2022 through 2023 to pay the annual cost of the maintenance and servicing of landscaping, lighting, water quality improvements, graffiti, streets, street sweeping, parks, and trail maintenance, a reserve fund for capital replacement and administrative expenses with respect to City of San Bernardino Community Facilities District Number 2019-1? Is there a motion?
Move it, move it.
Motion by Councilmember Charette?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember, I think it was Alexander I heard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protam?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then, I believe the other one he said was number ten, so we'll move to number ten and then followed by number eleven. Let me see here, give me one second. I am opening the public hearing at eight sixteen PM. Could I get a, are we gonna get a staff report on this item? Are we done with public hearing or is this part of public hearing?
This is not one of the annexation public hearings.
So then...
But it is one of the items that the mayor had a conflict with.
Is this part of public hearing or not? It is? Okay.
Yeah. Seven, eleven, and twelve are public hearings. I believe we're going in the order that the mayor had listed his conflicts.
Alright, and then he'll return for item number ten, I believe, right?
Item nine.
Item nine, I'm sorry, my apologies. Alright, let's, let's please have the staff report on this item. Or on this, okay, then we'll just wait for ten. This is for Wilmington Homes, Palm Avenue, Project Ward Four.
Yes, good evening, councilmembers. The item before you is a general plan amendment and zone change. Change the designation from general commercial to medium residential for property containing approximately fifteen acres to allow for the construction of one hundred and thirty-three single-family residences that will be detached. It's on Highland Avenue at Palm Avenue. So a quick site plan, showing an aerial of the property. Again, this is the decided commercial district that will be changed to residential. The view of the site. Again, we have three different floor plans. We have three different elevations. The rate, the square footages range for approximately sixteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square feet, three to five bedrooms. This below the, what would be allowed by the density of the zone, the allowable zone and the density in the RM zone is twelve units. They're being proposed at nine units per acre. They have approximately six hundred ninety-one square feet of private open space. The common open space is about one hundred and sixty-four square feet. There was a mitigated negative declaration that was done and vetted for this project, so we complied with the CEQA requirements. This is the site plan showing the homes. The colors indicate the different styles, floor plan models, if you will. They have the various floor plans. We have some elevations. This is the landscaping plan showing throughout. We have got a kind of pocket park towards the entrance on the far right of the slide. These are some renderings of the view from the street. Again, this will be a gated community, so it'll be a private entrances, private street. With that, our recommendations is to adopt the resolution certifying the mitigated declaration, the ordinance approving the Development Code Amendment to change the zoning, and also the resolution approving the project, and schedule the item for the next hearing. Thank you. I'd be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is also here, if you have questions, could the applicant?
Do we have any requests to speak on this item? Does anyone wish to speak on this?
Yes. I need a...
From the public, my apologies. Do we have a, I don't, I don't have the slips with me, so I don't know.
We did not receive any for this.
We have one, gentlemen.
And we also received some emails from residents asking about the Wilmington Homes projects.
Those were provided to you and the council, and they're posted on the city's website.
Sir, if we could have your, I don't know if he has to be sworn in or what the protocol is for public hearings. But you're speaking on this item, correct?
You'll be fine.
I tried to get in here earlier, but I wasn't allowed to get in here because the room was overcrowded. I just got in here a few minutes ago.
That's fine.
And I wanted to speak about this property.
Please go ahead and then we'll collect your speaker slip for...
I own a piece of property across the street and just down the block from this, more closely down by, near the florist shop across from Patton. Now, I did the math on this particular development. They want to build one hundred and thirty-three homes on this site, and there's fourteen point seven acres on this property. If you do the math, one hundred and thirty-three homes into fourteen point seven acres, that means they're going to be building homes on four thousand eight hundred and fourteen square foot lots, because there's a total of six hundred and forty thousand three hundred and thirty-three square feet total of the, if you take the fourteen point seven acres and multiply it out by four, three, five, six, oh. That's really small lots, so they must be building these in clusters from the pictures of this. To me, this is nothing more than building a new slum in our neighborhood. Now, they may be making this a gated community, but to me, this is nothing more than a new slum here in the City of San Bernardino. I've owned a piece of property and many pieces of property in this community. I've been not a resident here in the City of San Bernardino, but I've owned property here since nineteen eighty-five. When you're building something this small with these size of homes that they're now showing you, this is gonna be a new compact neighborhood, just very similar to what we just got rid of down on Highland Avenue in Arden. So, I just see this as a future slum coming in the next twenty years. We're gonna have the same problem that we had down at Highland Avenue in Arden. We got rid of one slum, and this is just gonna become a new future slum. I don't want it. It's too much of a compact neighborhood in our community. We don't need it. I'm sorry. They may be thinking, oh, this is a great development. Well, Mr. Wilmington can go live in it for the next twenty years. But this is gonna become a new slum in our community. I don't want it. We don't need fifteen hundred and eighteen hundred and two thousand square foot homes with one hundred and thirty-three homes and fourteen point acres. He can build a standard-sized home and on seven thousand square foot lots. We don't need two-story homes. This is not a neighborhood where we have two-story homes now. We have single-family homes, single-story homes. We just don't need one hundred and thirty-three homes on fourteen point seven acres. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could we please collect the speaker slip for the record? Sir? Did you have your little speaker slip so that we could collect it for the record? Thank you, sir. Any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, we'll just go ahead and open it up to councilmembers if you have any. Actually, I'm sorry. I am now closing the public hearing at eight twenty-four PM for deliberation and action. Do we have a motion or any questions or comments?
Yes, I read the comments that we were emailed, and they talked about they were gonna be using vinyl fencing to separate the properties and delineate the boundaries of the, of the, of the project area. Is that, is that the case?
No, the perimeter of the project and the entry areas, that'll be with split face, double-sided.
Okay.
The, the inside, the, between the properties, that is going to be vinyl. That is proposed at vinyl right now.
Okay, well, I'd make it a condition, a condition for approval that they, that they put, that they put the cinder block split face as the dividing, as the dividers for, for the property, or the parcels. It's a policy we've been, we've been implementing through our planning commission, and I think it's a good policy. I know that for the developer, it'll be cheaper to put the vinyl fencing, but we want properties that are gonna, that are gonna hold their value and that will be quality properties twenty years from now. So I would make that a condition of my approval, so I'd make that amendment.
One second, then.
I have a question.
Yeah, and also it says that there's no open space. There's no playground in the open space.
Like, like this one?
I don't, I don't know. It's just, I'm just giving...
No, that's, that's, that's the common open space for the project.
Okay. Okay, just so, okay, Roger that, then I appreciate that. And I concur with Councilmember Sanchez. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have the applicant here tonight? If we have agreement with that?
The applicant's represented Moses Kim.
Okay.
And one more question.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Moses Kim with Wilmington. We would be open to cinder block. We'll work with staff on the type of block for, for the side yards and the rear yards within the community. But like Oliver had mentioned, the entire perimeter will be double-sided split face, and so we'll make sure we work with staff on that.
Yeah. So it sounds as though we do have agreement on both sides. Any other, I think councilmembers, Ibarra, you had a question?
And then, just to clarify for Mr. Wilmington's rep, I know the constituents who live near these properties, proposed the properties, they were asking, in my opinion, they look like townhomes. Can you confirm that they would be the townhomes, right? Not apartments, not, because it's saying single-family residence.
So there's two products. The northerly side will be your standard, traditional, single, single-family, two-stories. And along the southern side of the project, as you can see, it's a cluster product. So they're, they're detached, single-family homes, but they have shared court, alley courts as they park their garages. You've probably seen some of those kind of projects happening recently in newer communities. That's what we're doing here.
Okay, and then one of the constituents that spoke right now, he, he talked about it being impacted, was a study done on the parking and entering and exiting the property?
We've had, we've had, yes, we have traffic consultants, environmental consultants, who's done some extensive study on parking. There's actually a lot more parking here than most other communities. Those streets down in the middle have parking. There will be parking around the, kind of like the circular drive alley there. And each, each home will have a two-car garage, and the ones along the northerly side, the traditional homes, will have driveways where you can park two additional cars. So, yeah.
And I'm trying to see visitor parking? Do you have anything for visitor parking?
Visitor parking, yes. We have parking spaces right at the common area on the right side, right as you drive in through the gates. There's also parking, I believe, back in the corner there. I can't see how, I think there's approximately twelve or thirteen spaces at the common area. And there are some parking sporadically, just kind of spread out. There are some, some head and spaces as well, so.
Okay, thank you. One more question.
Okay, no more questions. Any other councilmembers wishing to speak? I believe, did we have a motion in a second?
Yes, by Councilmember Sanchez, seconded by Councilor Reynoso, with the added condition that the cinder blocks be used as dividers for the parcels.
Okay, we'll go ahead and proceed to the.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
No.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. And then, was that the last? One more? No, 11, okay. All right, we'll move on to number 11. Wilmington Homes Medical Center Drive Project in Ward 6. I am opening the public hearing at 8:29 PM. Could I get a staff report on this item, please?
Yes, councilmembers. This item involves General Plan Amendment 21-01, Development Code Amendment 21-06, a subdivision 2112, and Development Permit Type P 2106. It's proposing to change the general plan designation and the zoning from, excuse me, just the zoning designation from general commercial to medium residential for approximately 10-acre site to allow the future development of 95 detached homes. And it's on Highland Avenue at approximately Medical Center Drive. This is the location of the site. This is the current zoning of the property. This is looking towards the site. Again, we have three different floor plans. This ranges from 1,700 square feet to 2,100 square feet, three and four bedrooms. Again, the allowable density would call for 118 units. They're proposing the 95. The open space is approximately, private open space, approximately 600 square feet, approximately 250 square feet for the common open space, and there are 43 guest parking spaces. Again, there was a secret documentation done for this to analyze traffic and all the other environmental items that we review. This is the site plan. And this would be Highland Avenue is to the north. We have two streets down below. Those would be for emergency access only. So keep in mind that this is a gated community, and so the access would be only if there was an emergency for emergency vehicles. These are the samples of the floor plans. We have the elevations. This is the landscaping plan. Again, to the top of the slide, you'll see that's Highland Avenue. As you enter the site, you will see a common area of the pocket park there for the community. We do also have guest parking spaces that are dispersed through the site. This would be once you've entered the site and going towards the east. And this is a view from the pocket park. Again, our recommendations is you adopt the resolution approving the General Plan Amendment and the ordinance for the Development Code Amendment resolutions approving the project. And we ask that you schedule this item for second reading at the next meeting, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any requests to speak on this item? Does anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Turned into a speaker slip?
No, we do not.
There's, no? There's some. Is this for this item? Was there a speaker slip filled out?
No, there was no speaker slip. Is it free that I speak, though?
On this item, yes.
Yes.
Please start with your name, sir.
Yeah, my name's Albert Herrera. On this side here, and on, well, I mean, if you throw both of them in, my concern is about the community. I know you guys are talking about fencing, gated community and everything, but how's it going to affect the schools when the school's already overpacked as they are? You know, are they going to add in more schools for the children and everything else? I mean, it's just, I mean, the school's already overpacked as there is.
Can I answer that question?
Yes.
I don't believe that the elementary school around the corner, which will be Ingram Elementary, it's not impacted. Actually, it has one of the lowest attendance, average of scholars there at that school. I don't believe that the schools in the area are impacted, sir. But I do believe that the school district would definitely look to, as the communities do continue to grow, would look to build more schools when we become more dense with community members. So don't, I'll keep my eye on that for you. Don't worry about that.
Thank you, and that was my biggest concern. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Nora Bruggerman. And my question would be, what kind of research is Wilmington Homes doing in the area? Because I believe on Palm, Palm Liquor Store and Freddie One Liquor Store or Freddie Circle One, those two liquor stores attract a lot of crime. There's always a lot of people hanging out there. There's shootings, there's a lot of homeless people that come. So what kind of researches are you guys making to ensure that your new residents will be safe? And because I'm telling you, these liquor stores, they attract, there's a lot of shootings. I live down the street, I see them. There's robberies, defecation, there's peeing, I mean, all of the above. So that would be my only question. How do you intend to keep these new homes safe and the residents safe? Because we're already dealing with the crime and with the violence and the shootings.
Okay. Any other public speakers for this item? Okay, I am now closing the public hearing at 8:34 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have a motion or comments or questions from councilmembers?
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes, I'd like to make the same condition for approval for this project. Same ones. I don't want the vinyl fencing. I want the split face on the perimeter and then, yeah, and then splitting the parcels up. And I'd like to touch on the two comments that were made. They were very good comments. Development of this sort is the gold standard of development in any city like ours. This is a high-tax-revenue-yielding type of project. So these projects, once these are built and these homes are occupied, that the amount of revenue that a city is able to get from property taxes and the various other taxes that are collected from a development like this are enormous. And they're the ones that bankroll any expansion in our school districts and our service provider, our city government. So more police, more code enforcement. Everything that needs to be done is done through revenues that we're able to generate from projects like this. But I just want to make sure, and we're doing that right now, so I applaud this council for making sure that the development is of the highest quality so that the values continue to hold up as the years go by. So I would make that approval based on those conditions.
Do we have the applicant's representative to have on record with agreement to that request?
Mayor Protem, before he completes, can I add one more item, please, that we've already discussed with Wilmington?
Sure, please.
Thank you so much, sir. On the same email that we have, I was sent this email to Wilmington so that they could look at these items. And I'm very grateful that Wilmington has been receptive in any type of changes, anything that the community is requesting, that they have responded to our emails and listened to the community. So I do appreciate that. Number one on this email says that a long Highland Avenue incorporates stone veneer on the block wall fencing to enhance the quality and aesthetics of the development, especially since the front could be seen from the freeway and a busy street. And so we have discussed that in understanding that this type of enhancement to the community, seeing where it sits on Highland in Ward 6, and across the street is somewhat of an unsightly shopping center, that the folks who would be purchasing these homes would not really want to directly look at that once they're inside of those homes. And so we just did discuss the stone veneer block wall on Highland.
We can work with staff to put some more aesthetics to the frontage. From what my landscape architect tells me, you know, having stone mixed in with split face isn't, I guess, designed, you know, to landscape professional standards. But whether it's adding pilasters or, you know, doing something like that, I can work with the staff to implement something more for the frontage along West Highland Avenue.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And again, I believe that it's been about 35 years since Ward 6 has received a new development, and we're going to continue to be working on affordable housing as well in that ward. The city of San Bernardino needs over 8,000 homes. That's how many homes that we need in order to be able to address our unsheltered situation. So various types of housing will be coming throughout the entire city to be able to suit the needs of all of our community members.
Thank you. And is the, and are you agreeable to the council?
Councilmember Sanchez's question, yes. We could accommodate changing out the vinyl fencing with some sort of cinder block. We can work with staff to see what kind of material we want to use, so we're fine with that.
One more question.
Thank you. Councilmember Ibarra?
What's the cost range for these townhomes?
Yeah, that's the million-dollar question. Well, a lot of people are asking the same question to me all the time. We don't have a fine answer. Obviously, it depends on the market. But generally, I would say we're going to be in the 500s.
That might be out of.
Yeah, I couldn't speak to anything more than that, so.
Yeah, a lot of our residents won't be able to apply.
Okay.
Again, that's why I stated that we will be bringing all various different types of housing projects to our communities here in San Bernardino. We're all working on that currently.
And to also remind you, one of the comments from the neighboring resident was about safety. Yes, this is a gated community, but it is also going to be run by an HOA, an HOA that can employ a security guard, you know, every so often to make sure, you know, there's safety within the community. So there's things that could be done to keep more safety within this community, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have, I'm sorry, my apologies, I don't remember if we had a motion and a second.
We have a motion, we do not have a second.
Oh, second. I think I heard Councilmember Reynoso crossed the finish line first there. So we'll go ahead and proceed to voting.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet? Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I guess we will, I think there was one more public hearing item, and that was number nine. At which time, the mayor, I guess, would have.
Item 12 is also a public hearing.
Oh, geez, okay. Item number, give me one second. Oh, this is one that he did not recuse from himself from.
So we would go back to item nine and then proceed with item 12.
All right, we'll go to number nine. All right. I am opening the public hearing at 8:41 PM. Could I get a staff report on this item, please?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. The item for you tonight is the Public Hearing for Fiscal Year 2022-23 Assessment levies for previous deformed assessment districts. And the public hearing today is on the assessment proposed to be levied and collected from the owners of a property within each assessment district for the fiscal year 2022-23 to pay the cost for maintenance, servicing, and operating of public landscaping, landscaping and lighting, and detention basins and storm drains facilities. The assessment of an annual fee upon properties within each assessment district provides the revenue to offset the cost of maintenance of the public improvements within each assessment district. The amount of the assessment which are proposed to be levied in all parcels are accessible land which each assessment district has been determined pursuant to the methodology in each engineer's report. And it's based on a special benefit conferred upon each such parcel from the payment of the cost of the maintenance, servicing, and operating of the public improvement. This is an item that comes to you every year just for the levy of the assessment. That concludes staff report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Keisha, do we have any requests to speak from the public? Any members of the public wishing to address item number nine? Seeing none, hearing none. Now closing the public hearing at approximately 9, I'm sorry, 8:45 PM for deliberation and action. Do we have a motion? Motion by Sharet? Second?
Second.
By Calvin? Final comments or questions? If not, members, I'm sorry, we're not voting electronically. Ms. City Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet? Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you very much, council. We have action on item number nine. Let's move on to item number 12. This is a draft fiscal year 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan associated with Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, and Emergency Solutions. The recommendation is there before you, and this is a two-part recommendation. I'm now opening the public hearing at approximately 8:45 PM. Could I please get a staff report on the item?
Yes, it gives me great pleasure to welcome the newest member of the city's management staff, Cassandra Cersei. Comes to us from the city of Victorville. She is the Deputy Director for Housing and Homelessness, a position we recently created. She is the first incumbent in that position, and she will be presenting the staff report. But first, let's welcome Cassandra to the city of San Bernardino.
Thank you, mayor and honorable councilmembers. The item that I have to present for you today is regarding the Annual Action Plan draft that is a requirement from HUD. This annual action plan has to be presented each year, and it's pretty much an application that outlines the priorities of the city to address conditions within the community pertaining to affordable housing, homelessness, blight, economic growth, and development. The city has been allocated the following funding sources from various HUD entitlements, which includes Community Development Block Grants, Emergency Solutions Grants, and Home Ownership Assistance Program Funds. In total, the city is set to receive $3,112,512 in CDBG funds, $1,569,520 in home funds, $278,068 in ESG funds. With that funding source, the city has allocated every single penny to go towards community assistance, homelessness, economic development, and affordable housing within the city. The recommendation is that council approve a public hearing, which is required by HUD, and also adopt the 2022-2023 Annual Action Plan, which is a requirement in order for the city to receive the funding that I just mentioned. And I'm available for any questions if you have any regarding the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Cersei. You did pretty good on your first try.
Motion to approve.
Welcome aboard. It's a motion for approval by Calvin with a second by Alexander. Any final comments? All right, let's call the roll.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Sharet?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Calvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Motion passes.
Welcome, Ms. Cersei, and thank you. Thank you. We wish you a lot of luck here in our city, and thank you for your contributions to our CDBG program. Thank you. Okay, let's move on back to, we've concluded our public hearing portion. We'll resume back into our public comment portion. Now, I'm going to ask for your full cooperation, community. Can you help me? I want to call your name, but please get up out of your chair, and let's get you on the wall here, and let's get going here. We got a lot of comments tonight. We want to hear your comments, and it's okay to speak to us, but help us, help me help you in delivering these comments. Brian Sanchez. Brian, are you here? We're moving on. Yenny Ruiz. Alejandro Rodriguez. Olga. Any of those folks here? We do have Spanish interpretation available, so please feel free. Go ahead, ma'am. Are you Yenny? Welcome. Go ahead. You're recognized for three minutes.
Buenas noches. Yo estoy aquí para ofrecer mi testimonio de el que sigue después de querer procesar los permisos para ser vendedor ambulante. Yo hace un año y medio. Oh, se me van a traducir.
I'm sorry, just a moment. So procedurally, are you our translator, sir? Okay, go ahead and get the mic or the handheld mic. And then, do you want to wait for her upon conclusion, then you translate? Or how would you like to do it?
Mayor, if I can make an announcement?
Go ahead.
Okay. Buenas noches, tenemos disponible un intérprete para brindar servicios en español. Las personas que vayan a ocupar intérprete, por favor, formen línea al lado izquierdo.
Okay, Ms. Reese, welcome again. Bienvenida. Let's go ahead and speak into the microphone, please.
Hable, hable, y yo voy a hablar para usted mientras usted está hablando, puedo hablar como quiera, okay? En voz alta si quiere, y yo voy a hacer su voz básicamente. Va a estar leyendo?
Ms. Reese, are you prepared and ready to go? You're on.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Good evening, I'm Jerry Reese. I'm a street vendor. Excuse me. I'm here to ask what's going to happen after all the paperwork of being a street vendor are. It's been a year and a half that I've received. I received a citation for being on the street, being a street vendor. Then the city told me that I could legalize my business and assist a course that I could attend to, which was about a justice of immigrants. And that was about a year ago now. I still have not been able to finish my documents due to the fact that there's always a miscommunication between the parties. I have proof here, in addition here, that today, even today, I went to another city board meeting. And the health department was going to be there. They were absent. They were not there. I always have concerns. It's not just, it's not fair that the health department do not give a clear. do not give a clear, clear information to us. And they don't want to, they don't want to serve me, attend to me just because I don't speak English. I've proof. I've taken people with me to help me out with the whole process. So, so please support us, take action, and make this process easy for us so that we can follow along and make it doable. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alejandro Rodriguez, Olga Flores. Alejandro, are you here? Okay, we're moving on. Olga Flores, are you here? Olga, go ahead, ma'am. Do you need a translator?
No.
Go ahead. Welcome.
Good evening, honorable San Bernardino council members and mayor Malibia. My name is Olga Flores. I am a San Bernardino resident and a street vendor organizer for the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. For several years, the coalition has been working with thousands of street vendors, bares, academia, business owners, and state elect leaders to address the need to incorporate street vendors in the region for more economic. Today, I'm here to ask to please support the creation of a workers' vendor center, increase staff capacity to help the street vendors go through the process of apply for business license, and stop criminalizing this family, you tell the city has assist them to truly assist them. As a vendor organizer, I have worked to educate street vendors to apply for business license and to distribute six hundred thousand in resources for their business in the process. We have learned to the police encounters have only pushed them futures out of, for our system into the property. This has also made them more vulnerable to criminals who take advantage of them. If insisted of creating more conflicts between vendors and police, we invest in a system that help them fill for license. We will see the economic benefits that a street vendor's skill to provide the city like New York and Los Angeles. Please put a man, a moratorium of citation and rates and high, and here staff for them, get business license. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Miriam Flores. Miriam Espinoza, are you here? Moving on, Virginia Lopez, Juan Sandoval. Okay, come on up. Welcome. Are you Virginia? Who's Miriam? Miriam, welcome. Go ahead.
Hello, good evening. My name is Miriam Espinoza. Reason why I'm here is to know if the city, the police have given you authorization to be racist against us, street vendors, because we do understand we are working illegally, but to me, the police and the city have gone overboard to what's called normal laws. We're not asking anything from the government or the city. Simply, we want support in our permits to be able to work legally. We know that, we know we're not going to get it for free. We know we're going to pay for it. We're going to pay because we invest. We have people working with us that also get, earn money for us, which also pay taxes because we're not here for free. We're not criminal. I only ask for justice, my colleagues, and everyone that work in the community, street vending, and I really hope that you all listen to us and to really know that it's, it, it's a honest job. We don't do drugs. We don't kill people. The only thing we want is support for us to be able to work legally.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Virginia. Is that you, ma'am?
Yes.
Welcome. Do you need translation services? Go ahead. Go ahead. Ms. Lopez, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Virginia Lopez. I'm also a street vendor representing my family, Mexican, coming here to fight in this country to move forward. We're not here to steal. We're not here to kill. We just want to move forward and stop justice instead of police chasing me, chase the ones that are killing and selling drugs. This is really unjustified. We want to move forward in life. It's enough, enough of this injustice. And we're going to keep fighting for Mexicans, and please please stop the police chasing us. I've been looking for help. I ask. I ask all Mexicans to support this law, and please help us support it as well. We are all here as a community. We want to be legally. We want to be working. We're not criminals. We don't kill anybody. We don't sell drugs. And please make the process easy for us to be able to sell, to be able to, to be able to be a street vendor legally on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Juan Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval, you're recognized. Are you, are you, Mr. Sandoval? Great. Welcome. Followed by Veronica Roman and Rosario Pulido.
And good evening. This is Juan Sandoval. I'm also a street vendor. We try to offer the community our, the roots from our country, the food, the best dishes we have. We are not criminals. We don't try, we're not here to do any ill will to anybody. We're trying to sell, sell legally. We're trying to provide to our families. We're not coming here to be a bargain to this country. In fact, it's the opposite. We want to contribute with our taxes. I ask, please, help us. Do something to regulate our business. We want to work with you, but at the same time, please help us, support us. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, Veronica Roman. Veronica, welcome. Veronica, do you need, are you, Ms. Roman? Veronica? Veronica, welcome, Ms. Roman. Do you need translation services?
No.
No.
Good evening, honorable council members and mayor Malibia. My name is Veronica Roman, and I'm a San Bernardino resident and community and outreach organizer in the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. Today, I'm here to ask you to please, number one, support the creation of workers and vendor centers. Number two, to increase staff capacity to help the street vendors go through the process to applying for business license. And number three, and stop to criminalizing these families until the city has assist them to truly assist them them. As an organizer, I have been working with a hundred of street vendors who contribute thousands of dollars to our local economy since the city approved the ordinance that allows police to use the help code to city street vendors. We have seen an increase in confrontation among police and community members who don't understand why police officers will take their livelihood away. The city has not increased staff capacity to work with the street vendors either. This, the speed our efforts, the four, I'm sorry, the speed our efforts to educate street vendors about the process and distributing six hundred thousand in mini grants to help them acquire equipment required. Many of these vendors have only encountered roadblocks when they meet with city staff. The inland coalition in San Bernardino resident asks you to please put a moratorium and citation and rates until you had staff who can work with the street vendors to help them become part of our economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Rosario? Welcome. Go ahead.
Good evening, you all. My name is Rosario Pulido. I'm a San Bernardino
I'm sorry, ma'am. You're out of order. Just have a seat.
I'm a San Bernardino county resident.
Have a seat, ma'am.
I'm a street vendor, and I support all vendors, street vendors. And we all need a license to be able to work legally, just like I support any worker to see if they open a center here for all the for all the, the, the food workers. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, mayor, I just explained to the public, because I think the public has a right to know why the clock is reading six minutes. There is a state law in California that says under the Brown Act, we must allow people to speak. When a translator is provided to a speaker, we are legally required to provide double the time of six minutes so that six minutes is being posted when we are translating comments.
And to clarify, you don't need all six minutes. You're welcome to speak your full three minutes, and we appreciate our public. Now, I want you to help me help you. So Ingrid Salazar, are you here? Ingrid? Come on up. Albert De La Vega, are you here? Go ahead. Have a, have a stand there for me. Paula Escudero, come on down, ma'am. Come on down. Mr. Monroe, are you here? Come on up. Okay, Ms. Salazar, do you need a translator?
No.
Go ahead. Three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and community members. My name is Ingrid Salazar, and I am currently an immigrant rights advocate with the Pomona Economic Opportunity Center. PEOC's mission is to empower low-wage immigrant workers in Pomona and across the Inland Empire. And to that end, we regularly conduct outreach to day laborers that wait for work on the corner of Highland and Lincoln here in San Bernardino. Our organization is focusing, is focused on protecting the rights of day laborers such as the workers who look for work every day outside of the Home Depot. San Bernardino County plans to spend one hundred thirty-eight point five million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act funds into pandemic response, which includes homeless services, housing and testing, vaccines, and department response. It allocates funds towards economic development strategies and key infrastructure improvements. Additionally, it funded one hundred and ten million dollars to government operations to improve county systems like pandemic-based technology, innovation, and efficiency, service delivery enhancements, and administration of the American Rescue Plan Act program. While the county focuses on three necessary categories, it fails to include funding towards public transportation, public spaces, social programs, and services like childcare, sick leave, teachers, and students. There is also a lack of use of funding for community health workers, community clinics, local public health, and social service departments, as well as an allocation of funds for mental and behavioral health services. As you are, all are aware, the city of San Bernardino received four hundred twenty-three point five million dollars from American Rescue Plan Act funding, which is federal COVID relief. This money is intended for economic recovery after COVID, and an economic opportunity worker center is the perfect way to invest this money. We need the city to invest in a space where workers can be taught their rights, engage in civic life, and can improve their skills to have access to better-paying jobs and a better quality of life. A worker center would provide resources to workers in the Inland Empire and San Bernardino that have little recourse to workplace abuses and are often vulnerable to illness or exhaustion. The resources exist to make this a reality, and we ask that you do your part to make sure it does. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, Albert? Albert and Paula and, I'm sorry, you're out of order. Just remain patient, all right? Mr. De La Vega, welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Alberto De La Vega. I'm a street vendor. Some of you may know me as funnel cake Fridays. I do sell the best funnel cakes in San Bernardino. I've been a street vendor for more than a, a little over four years now, okay? Serving the community, putting smiles on people's faces. To me, street vending is more than just, you know, selling food on the street. It's where people and family get together and they share, you know, interest eating culturally significant food. And it's, it's a safe, and it brings light to, to our streets. The community has expressed their appreciation for street vendors time and time again, okay? I enjoy what I do. I love what I do, and I hope that the work center for street vendors could find a new place, a new home without being criminalized or being, having their stuff being taken away. I mean, it's sad to see when you see code enforcement and police officers arrive and you see all the street vendors rushing, picking up everything that they got. They, I, I have it on video where I saw this, this father holding their baby in a canopy, running across the street, almost gets hit. And I asked, as this is unfolding, I'm, I'm asking myself like, is this really necessary? Like, why, why the panic? You know, I mean, they're, all they're doing is just selling food. So I really hope that this work center, you know, works out, and you guys do approve it with you guys' support. And that's my only way of supporting my family as well, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Escudero? I'm sorry, Mrs. Paula? Paula? Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Paula Escudero. Also a street vendor. And we come to this country to work. We want you to help us get a permit. We don't want to be a bargain to the government. We come here to work. We were not coming here to being taken care of. And we don't want to be hiding from the police, from the city. We want to be free. We want to move forward. We want to sustain our families, our children. Because if we go ask, they're not going to give it to us. So on that, on, on that note, we don't want to be a bargain to the government. We're here, we're willing to pay a permit. We don't want to be hiding, and we'll be happy to do so. And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Monroe? Welcome. Mr. Monroe, give me just a second. Jose Ramirez, are you here? Moving on. Jesus Manuel Gabriel? Are you here? Okay, Natalie Bautista. Natalie? Thank you, ma'am, if you'd come down. Mr. Ramirez, or I'm sorry, Mr. Monroe, welcome, sir. Go ahead.
My name is Marcos Monroe. Good evening to all. We come here, we want to find a resolution to our problem here, our issues. I'm a street vendor. I'm from Guatemala. Looking for a better, better opportunity to my family. We're being accused, we're being persecuted by the police. We, we're feeling intimidated.
We're feeling intimidated because of our race. We're being chased, persecuted by doing just something that it's to be able to support our families. And we are contributing to this great nation. With, to our economy, when we provide our products. And they're taking away our talents, which is, our talent is be able to make, cook this great food. We keep being hit on by the gas prices, rent prices. And they're taking away our right to be able to contribute to this great nation. So finally, we really would like to see a resolution to all this, and us be able to be part of it. And to the servers on the other side, providers, every time we go ask for help, they turn the cheek. They don't want to help us. So we're asking for a change. This cannot happen. And police to be able to defend us, protect us, and not the other way around, not us having to be afraid of them. Thank you very much, and you all have a good evening.
Okay, Natalie Bautista, welcome, ma'am. Do you need services, translation? All right. Rodrigo Ortiz, are you here? All right, sir. Come on down. Great. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First, I want to acknowledge that your community seeks justice for Rob Adams, and I want to extend my condolences to his family. Second, I am here to urge you to support a worker center in our city. I am the daughter of parents who worked in gardening and cleaning houses, jobs which are considered, quote-unquote, informal and unskilled labor, similar to that of day laboring and street vending, but jobs on which our community depends and on which our constituents make their income. You talked about entrepreneurship programs, which are giving folks support and jump-starting their small businesses. My aunt, who couldn't be here today, makes her living selling bandulce out of her van in the city, as well as around the county, from Riverside to up the mountain in Big Bear. Her goal is to one day have a brick-and-mortar panaderia. She graduated earlier this year in the program organized by the Inland Coalition for Immigrant Justice. Let's not leave things halfway. You have the opportunity to invest fully in the community and in the constituents by supporting an inaugural worker center. I want to thank Councilmember Reynoso for putting this on the agenda, and I ask that it be included again when there is a proposal to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Ortiz, you're ready to go. Do you need translation services?
Let me try to do my best.
Let's do it. You're doing great already.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm trying to represent all my teen and old vendors on the street. So my name is Rodrigo Ortiz. I'm the first immigrant of the first generation in this country for 14 years. I'm resident for San Bernardino, California. And to be honest, I want to tell you, I received many discrimination from the police department too, time ago. So the only thing that I need for my partners vendors is like, I need the support of you guys. Just the only need is permit. That's it. Awesome place. Everybody like want to rent a place with all certification for the city. It's the only that people need for vendors. That's the only thing. I want to stop for discrimination because nobody here is criminal, no like tips or like that. Just try to do the best for making support the families. I see some vendors, to be honest, fighting in the street. It's very sad. So the gastronomy for Latinos is very delicious. And this is, we are culture for us. It's like take care of my arm. This is my whip for survive in this country. Thank you so much, and I appreciate for the space.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ortiz, you did great in English. You did great. You did great. All right, next speaker, Claudia Bautista. Claudia, are you here? Great. Do you need translation services? No. Ms. Beltran, Isabella, are you here? Isabella, okay, come on down. Malibu, that's all I have, the first name of Malibu. All right. And Mr. Penman, to close us out, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Claudia Bautista. I am the deputy director with the Pomona Economic Opportunity Center. Our organization is focused on protecting the rights of day laborers and other immigrant workers who look for work. Wait, sorry. Our organization is focused on protecting the rights of day laborers such as the workers who look for work outside of the Home Depot every day on Highland. We understand that the fight for a worker center began back in November 2021, when we went close to 25 day laborers and street vendors were ticketed, had their vehicles impounded, and some of them even got charges for trespassing. We know that that was a large operation held by the San Bernardino Police Department and code enforcement. However, we recognize that the struggle goes back to 2019, and we would not be here today talking about the possibility of a worker and vendor center had it not been for street vendors organizing and demanding respect for their rights for the past three years. We want to thank Councilmember Reynoso for putting this on the agenda, although the mayor did mention it's not on the agenda, so I was a little bit confused about that. And we are hoping that once the agenda comes forward, once the item comes forward in the agenda, then for you to vote yes, that's what we're hoping and asking of you. While the original request to drop the citations, reimburse workers for their unfair fines, and stop the harassment and targeting of our communities were not answered by San Bernardino city leadership, if anything, they have ramped up their code enforcement operations and have continued to confiscate people's work equipment and tools. The supporting this worker center is the first step towards righting the wrongs inflicting on our community. We need the city to invest in a space where workers can be taught their rights, can engage in civic life, and can improve their skills to have access to better-paying jobs and a better quality of life. A worker and vendor center would provide resources to workers and vendors in the Inland Empire that have little recourse to workplace abuses and are often vulnerable to ill illness and exhaustion due to rising heat levels and other weather changes due to changing climate. More importantly, we ask that the rights of day laborers, street vendors, and other low-wage immigrant workers be upheld and respected in the city of San Bernardino. We ask that their civil rights and their personal property is respected. We are committed to supporting our community of day laborer, street vendors, and other low-wage immigrant workers and to work alongside them until we find a viable solution. We know that the city received over $423 million from ARPA money, so we know that the city has money right now to do this. It's time for San Bernardino Police Department to stop criminalizing, harassing, and even murdering our community. It's time to invest in people.
Isabel. Beltran, welcome.
Thank you very much for allowing me. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Isabel Beltran, and I am a saddened resident of San Bernardino. I'm really saddened to see my city decline as much as it has. Many of you say you care for your words. Please start showing it as I drive through. And I'm going to read this because I'm nervous, and this is my first time here, so please bear with me. As I drive through the neighborhoods, I am not seeing the care. So I have a question. So you're saying that the street vending are or can be legal? Yes? Okay. So now, my main concern is who will be responsible for the cleanup of our streets and our sidewalks? Because it's not being done now. Is that a question anyone can answer? Who's responsible for the cleanup?
Ms. Beltran, go ahead and give us your comments, and then we can have staff address some of your issues.
And I would like to know who's going to be responsible for the cleanup and how often, because I don't think the residents should have to call in for any reason for the cleanup. Because we've had to call in, and I've seen it done once so far. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Malibu, welcome. Thank you for your patience, ma'am. Thank you.
No problem. I do what I can.
We're trying to get through this.
Okay, I want to applaud them for coming out in the numbers that they did, honestly, because we, as a community, could take a book, the whole book from this, because they showed out of record numbers, and nobody's did, okay? So I'm going to stand with you guys. I have faith that you guys are going to get this right. I'm going to stand with the chief as well, because he just got this job, and I don't want, you know, everybody that's been there, now he has to be the person to carry the big bag. I want us to stay focused on the cops that rolled up like gang members. They showed up with tenant windows. I would have ran too. Let me say this. I own the business, not just the business, but the property as well, on Baseline and Sierra Way. There has been a lot of killings over there. Me and Sandra have spoke, you know, through Texas about the people that have been killed over there, and then bodies have been other places. It's just, and they're shot in the back, too. So that concerns me, that people are being shot in the back like that, right? I would have ran as well. If they were surveillance in that area, why was it not the lights when you pulled up? Why wasn't there a black and white accompanied them? I want those officers to be held accountable. I don't think that we need to start dragging I don't want us to start dragging the city council. I don't want us to start dragging the chief. I don't. I want us to stay focused on that should not have happened. Whether he had a gun or not, I'm not going to say he did. I'm not going to say he didn't. Whether he had a gun or not, the police is not the jury, not the judge, they're just the police. You don't get to do all this stuff. You work for us, and then you guys work for us, and then they work for y'all. So everybody got to be ready to play this game, because this in San Bernardino is not going to be happening. I stand very tall for my city. I stand with you guys. You guys have came out to my events, but this ain't going to happen. We're not going to do this. The police department should not be pulling up on nobody in unmarked cars without your lights on. That disturbs me that the police did that, because Baseline and Sierra Way, where my business is, if they would have pulled up on me like that, I would have probably ran too at 52 years old. I'd have been like, I would have ran. This is San Bernardino. They just said it was 53 murders this year. Not that that means more people have died than that, but just murders, homicides. So I don't think that we should be focused on, he had a gun, he didn't have a gun, he ran. He has a right to run. There was a wall and another wall. Where are you running to? Nowhere. Why is it that when black people commit crimes, we're dead at the scene, but everybody else is alive? This has to stop. And I'm telling you, I have faith in y'all. I told the chief as well. I'm one of the community activists, a business owner here, and I want to stand with him. But I don't have a problem with sliding and stepping, because if you don't do right, I'm going to come up here and say you're not doing right. So I want to give you guys a chance to be transparent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Penman. Ms. Davis, you submitted a speaker after it was called upon, so I apologize. We're going to move on, Ms. Davis. Mr. Penman, you're recognized. Go ahead, Mr. Penman. Go ahead, Mr. Penman.
I'm here to speak on item number 30, the counseling team contract for employee assistance program. If we do not allow our police chief to do his job, we're going to need that employee counseling team. I lost a handicapped child when he was three and a half years of age. I have a lot of empathy and sympathy for anyone who loses a child regardless of the circumstances or the age. But let's talk about what's going to happen here. Our police chief is going to be named as a defendant in a lawsuit. And he's going to have to be defended out of this shooting. I have no problem with people coming down and regular citizens giving their opinions, what we've been hearing. I encourage them to do that. However, we have to support our police chief. Now, a councilman who is largely responsible for getting this police chief here, along with the other council members, pushing for a person who represented the demographics of our city, we got this chief. We need to back this chief. Now, the council member who called for the protest is going to be subpoenaed by the plaintiff to testify, not just against the city, not just against the officer, but against the police chief. And he's going to be asked, why didn't you have confidence in the chief? And I've done a lot of these cases, cross-examined hundreds of witnesses. Why didn't you have confidence in your chief to do the investigation? Well, I did. Well, you called for a protest. Well, it wasn't against the chief, it was against the officer. Well, wait a minute. You backed this chief. Isn't it his job to do the investigation? Yes, it is. Didn't the police chief make one request, one simple request? Let me finish my investigation before you rush to judgment. That's the only request he made, but this one council member chose not to do that. So the chief is there trying to defend himself. Now, if your feelings are so strong about any subject, and when I was the elected city attorney, that happened to me once, there was a law that we had to not allow certain changes in an apartment, and these people had handicaps, I recused myself. If a council member feels so strongly about any subject, such as police shootings, he needs to recuse himself rather than call on the people to come down and protest. I did not call on people to come down and protest that ordinance. I have confidence in our chief. He's a good chief. I have confidence in his leadership. He's going to do his job. You have to let him do his job. Don't interfere with him doing his job. Don't put yourself in a position to have to testify against our chief of police, because that's what you have set up. Great that you feel the way you do, but if you're going to uphold the duties of your office and your fiduciary duty to this city, either be a council member and do it, or resign and be a community activist. Support the police chief.
And you are booing, you are booing the chief of police and not letting him do his job. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Penman, it was absolutely, I'm the one who, I'm the one who spoke out, but I have no idea. You're kind of old. I don't know where you get your information. I don't know where you get your information, but if your intention is to seek, like, sow discord with me and the police department for calling for accountability versus calling for a protest, where do you get your information? Who called for a protest? Where did I ask for a protest? And people like you love attention, so I'm going to stop now. And good luck to you in November, man.
Okay. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We're done with public comments. We will get back into our regularly council calendared items. We'll do a 10-minute recess. We'll be back here at approximately 9:40, 9:40. Please take your conversation outside to the lobby and close the door, please. Thank you. If you refrain, and please take your conversations out. Thank you very much. Okay, very good. This is the, I think there's been an administrative request to put item number 29 onto the discussion portion of tonight's calendar. Let's go ahead and make that adjustment.
And one other change, item 20 needs to be continued.
Okay, item number 20 off of the consent calendar will be continued as administrative pull from our staff. All right, let's go into our consent, I'm sorry, let's go to item number 20. All right, let's, let's go into our consent ca, I'm sorry, let's go to item number 29. This is item number 29 before you, council members. There's been a slight adjustment off of the consent calendar and we'll now entertain that in our public discussion portion of tonight's meeting. This is a Community Facilities District number 2021, I'm sorry, number 2020-1 Rancho Palma Special Tax Bond, Series 2022. Um, I will turn it over to our staff for a presentation and a staff report. Item number 29.
This is gonna be handled by Barbara Whitehorn, uh, agency director, administrative services.
No presentation from staff. This is Daniela from BB&amp;K. Good evening, City Council. My name is Daniela Hernandez. I'm an attorney at Best, Bestin, Krieger in the Public Finance Department. For consideration before you is a resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds within Community Facilities District number 2020-1 Rancho Palma in an amount not to exceed $5 million. The Community Facilities District is located in the Verdimont Community in San Bernardino, north of Little League Drive and east of Magnolia Avenue. The Community Facilities District is being developed into 119 single-family homes. The assessed value of the properties within the Community Facilities District is approximately 13.79 times the proposed debt service on the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance water system facilities, sewer system facilities, storm drain improvements, and transportation improvements of the city, as well as the cost of issuing the bonds. In connection with the issuance of the bonds, there has been presented to the City Council a Form of Fiscal Agent Agreement, which sets forth the terms and conditions pursuant to which the bonds are governed, a preliminary official statement which discloses material information to potential purchasers of the bonds, and a bond purchase agreement which sets forth the terms and conditions pursuant to which the underwriter will purchase the bonds. It is anticipated that the bonds will be sold and closed next month if this item is approved. This concludes my presentation. I am available for any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, the matter is there before you, council members. The recommendation is there. Is there a motion for approval? Moved by Charette. Is there a second by Figueroa? Any final comments? Otherwise...
What's the city's credit? Don't we have a credit rating?
I'm sorry, Mr. Alexander. Your question, sir? Go ahead.
What's the city's credit rating or bond rating?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Williams. I'm with Columbia Capital and we're serving as the municipal advisor on this transaction. Uh, the council member's question was, what is the credit rating, uh, of the city? Uh, these bonds are not an obligation of the city, so the city is not obligated in any way to pay any debt service on the bonds. Uh, these bonds do not have a, a rating, uh, which is typical for this type of, uh, financing.
Okay, so the city is under no ob, financial obligation?
Yes, sir.
Roger that. Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, motion and a second, members. Um, any objections? Is there any objections to this item? Otherwise, it is so ordered and moved, item number 29. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, let's move on to our consent calendar. At this time, I think it's most appropriate...
Mayor, we're, we still need to do discussion items, so discussion items two through five, I believe.
Oh, geez. Okay, we're back to, man, we're all over the place tonight. Okay, we're back in discussion mode. Item number two. My apologies.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I believe there's still public comment out. Are we doing that out of order?
We're doing that after, um, sir.
After, oh, okay.
As I haven't announced it. Yeah, items not on the agenda will be after. All right, let's proceed with item number two. This is a Third Amendment to Exclusive Negotiating Agreement with Carousel Mall. The staff report and the recommendation is there before you and, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yep, the, uh, this is an incredibly important item, uh, very, a big day for San Bernardino. It may not seem like it, but it is. Uh, staff report is gonna be presented by Nathan Freeman, Agency Director of Community Housing and Economic Development. Nathan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Again, Nathan Freeman, your Agency Director of Community Housing and Economic Development. Item number two before you this evening is simply, uh, your reviewing consideration of a proposed Third Amendment to the Exclusive Negotiating Agreement between the City of San Bernardino and the San Bernardino Development Company, better known as RDICO. Uh, it is our hope that, uh, with approval from the City Council, this Third Amendment to the ENA will accomplish three things. Number one, it will add LPC West, better known as the Lincoln Property Company, as a party to the original ENA and would make Lincoln the exclusive developer, uh, as it relates to the project moving forward. Second, it would extend the term of the ENA until September of 2023, which would allow staff and Lincoln the necessary time to negotiate a disposition and development agreement for your ultimate review and approval. And thirdly, it would amend the schedule of performance to reflect the new timeline contained within the ENA. Uh, as alluded, Lincoln Property Company is one of the, I would say, countrywide renowned developers. They have successfully developed, not only here in Southern California, but again across the country, developing, financing, and delivering mixed-use projects similar in size and scope to the Carousel Mall. Uh, it's our, uh, recommendation that the City Council review the ENA and approve it. I'm available to answer any questions the council may have, and representatives from RDICO and Lincoln are both available to answer questions as well.
Mr. Freeman, I have a question for you regarding the, um, terms, the terms of payment on exclusive, on the Second Amendment. The, um, action codified by the council on the Second Agreement suggests that there should be a payment of $50,000 additional dollars. My question to you is, um, is it Lincoln Properties' sole obligation to satisfy and fulfill that, or has the, uh, prior and previous, uh, developer, um, paid that and are, are balances made and payable and are they in good standing?
Uh, yes, they're in good standing. As you know, from the previous two amendments, we collected roughly $100,000. That would be applied towards this. Uh, again, we've spent very little of that money down so far. We feel very confident that amount is sufficient to carry us through, uh, to the disposition and, excuse me, development agreement.
Now, on the transition you suggest on this Third Amendment to the ENA, it, uh, identifies in the second section, uh, Lincoln Properties. So, who then now is responsible for the payment and, or is that absolved from RDICO and where does that payment then go?
So, again, RDICO is, is still a part of the project. They are a silent partner and that $100,000 would remain.
Okay. All right, very good. We'll open up for comments and questions from members. Members, any comments or questions?
Uta Roof.
Mr. Reynoso? Mr. Reynoso, go ahead.
So, Mr. City Manager, I guess, you're the appropriate one to ask this question. The process that we went through to select this development team, it wa, there was something in that contract that allowed for them to basically become a silent partner, bring on the exclusive developer now. This is the first time hearing about it publicly. That was totally legal and they're just gonna be a silent partner?
Yes. The answer is yes. It is completely legal. As a matter of fact, it was, um, from the very beginning of this process, um, it was always the intention to bring someone like Lincoln aboard. However, this is happening much sooner than we anticipated and, uh, the fact that we have somebody with the capacity and the capability and the track record that Lincoln has, um, is, uh, I mean, I'd say we're at, this actually puts us ahead of pace and is a really great expression of the capacity, the meaning of this project. There is a great, this is gonna be a great outcome for the city because we have somebody who, who has absolutely got the capacity to self-perform this. And that is really an important step in the right direction for the city.
So what is RDICO? What do you get out of this by being a silent partner? What does that mean for the Community Benefits Agreement? And what does it mean for the future of the downtown of San Bernardino?
Well, I can tell, I can speak to the CBA.
You can, or they're in the back of the room?
Yeah, well, I can speak to the CBA. The community, the, the obligation to pursue and enter into a Community Benefits Agreement remains. That, that is not being extinguished by this.
Does it remain or is it guaranteed?
It's a, it's one of the conditions upon which we embarked on this process in the first place.
And Lincoln has no problem? They're all in?
No problem at all.
Is it codified by, um, written anywhere in the contract?
It's not a, it's not a written, it, look, the staffs made very clear, there will be no agreement, there will be no project without the Community Benefits Agreement. That's, that is already expressed.
So why isn't it, why isn't it codified by, by written statement in the ENA?
It'll be in the, I think it's, well, it's a separate agreement for starters. Uh, and it will also be, end up being a component, component of the development and disposition agreement as opposed to exclusive negotiating agreement. There's, they're very different types of documents. ENA leads to DDA and the CBA is in between.
So are you suggesting that the DDA would then, uh, have that within, within the DDA structure?
It ends up being a condition of the agreement by which the development will occur. So yeah, it's, it's essentially structured such that it ends up in the, in the project through the DDA or the purchase sale agreement. There's a whole bunch of different, this is a very complex series of documents that have to be, and agreements have to be entered into to get to this point. So, that, so it'll be a component of the final agreements by which the project is going to be developed.
So, the question is, the community has, is, so then why is, uh, Renaissance and RDIC part of this deal anyway? I mean, if Lincoln Property is, certainly has the bandwidth, the capacity, the ability to develop, they have the checkbook, they have the resources, the connections. Why then is, why are these other two individuals involved?
They, this is a private-to-private agreement between them. Um, and I don't have, I'm not, I don't know much of the detail about their agreement between the two of them. Um, you can ask them, I suppose, but it's a pri, that's that, those details are not something we're privy to. Um, but that is what the deal they arranged, that they, that they entered into between them. That's their, that's their part of the agreement.
So now it's back on council to verify the veracity of the agreement. How do we know the agreement? This is an agreement between two parties that are non-disclosed of council?
It's on staff to ensure that the agreements, you know, continue to comply with the requirements and obligations that were entered into in the first place.
Okay, council, well, it's before you. I don't get to vote on this.
One, one question. Who has a question? Oh, go. Um, so, let me get this straight and take it how you will. A lot of people had the idea that when we chose RDICO, the weakness that was very commonly known, and especially upon this dais, is that there wasn't funding for it. And so the long-term, I think what you're saying without saying, and I guess I want the community to understand explicitly, is that we basically agreed, correct me if I'm wrong, we agreed to go into this negotiating agreement with RDICO and we knew as a council that, like most developers who buy massive plots of land like this, they could divvy it up and sell it into different pieces or whatever. Are you telling me that that happened with the entire property to this new developer? They sold it. We agreed to work with them and then they sold it already and they get to just make money off of it?
Well, I, they haven't, I wouldn't say they've sold it. They've entered into a partnership with Lincoln Property Group, Lincoln Property Company. That's what they've done. So there's, they remain in it, but they're, but the, but in essence, the master, the beauty of this solution is that there's one master developer for the site who will develop all components of it.
My colleague trusted. I'd like to hear from the rest of the council.
Councilman Alexander, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, what I'm trying to understand is, I'm, I'm reading right here from, it says the terms of the ENA and the negotiation period there, thereunder is hereby extended for one year and shall now expire on Tuesday, September 12, 2023.
That is correct.
I thought the ENA was done.
The current ENA iteration expires in September of this year. Again, we're extending it out to September of next year. And again...
I can't, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Apologies. Uh, the current iteration, the Second Amendment expires in September of this year.
Right.
Uh, through this ENA, if approved, this Third ENA, it would be extended out to September. Again, for us to have the necessary time to do, uh, our, our negotiations, if you will, properly with Lincoln, to move this project forward to a very successful outcome.
And I want a successful outcome, but we moved this along, this council moved this along really quickly with the first iteration of this ENA. I think we gave them six months or two. Right. And now we're gonna extend it another year? And what is that, before you answer that question, I'm sorry, I'm skipping, so please, I apologize. What does that do to the DDA? Cause we, I thought we were on track to complete the DDA.
So the, the DDA is the ultimate outcome of our negotiations, the, the conclusion of the ENA.
Mm-hmm.
All we're saying is that with Lincoln on, we need more time to negotiate that, uh, again, roughly a year. Lincoln's coming into this late in the game, if you will. We need that time to negotiate a development agreement that is mutually beneficial for the city and for them as well.
So what it, so what is changing? If we're just bringing on a new partner, what, what is changing so vastly that you need a whole year?
Well, to, to be fair, councilmen, we're, we're asking for a year. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna take a year.
If, but you, but to be honest, if we give you a year, you'll take it.
Well, our goal as staff is always to negotiate the best possible deal in the most expedient time.
Well, see, the question is that, I know you're new, but we've been trying to get this done, this, this, this completed for a while. And now you're asking for a year. You're asking for every resident, under the sound of my voice, to wait another year before anything is done. And I, I don't think, I don't find that acceptable, uh, to wait another year when you just bring on a new partner. There's, there's things that need to move with a little bit more urgency. And I don't, I don't hear the urgency in your voice, and maybe that's not you, but I don't see the urgency in this document, because people are waiting. We're waiting. So where's the urgency?
So, let me, uh, take a crack apart of this. First of all, remember the word, you know, the, there's no absolute standard definition of ENA or DDA. So a lot of what we would ordinarily accomplish in a DDA is actually gonna be accomplished in this, in this iteration of the ENA with Lincoln. Lincoln is not a slow, slow-moving entity. On the contrary, you should see their scheduled, well, the scheduled performance is in here. It's a very aggressive schedule of performance. They want to move this along as quickly as they possibly can. They don't have any interest, they're not one who likes to buy and hold. They don't like to buy and sit on stuff. They buy to develop. And so, the fact that they are here and are, have the capacity that they have, both technical and financial, um, is the kind of presence that we need here in order to have this project happen in the first place. If we don't do this, um, yeah, I, I don't know what the future of the project is.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying don't. I said I don't see any urgency. Is Lincoln here tonight?
They, their representative is home ill. Otherwise, he would be.
So, a company of that capacity has one person?
They have a lead representative for this project. His name is Steven Lindgren. I've met with him multiple times. He's the guy.
Well, I, I hear you, but that, I, I find that disconcerting. A, a company of such capacity has one person. So, when one person goes down, no one can represent them. To come before this council to answer any questions. You don't find that disconcerting?
No.
One person?
Not, not in this instance, no. We have a great deal of confidence in Lincoln's ability to perform.
Yeah, but they don't, they're not before us.
They could have been on Zoom, right?
We could bring them in by Zoom. Are we allowed to bring them in by Zoom?
I mean, they're not a member of the elected body. I don't know that you could make that happen now. It would have to probably be pre-established. I have seen some council meetings where we are inviting, um, consultants and having reports given by Zoom, but I don't know that you're technologically set up to do that at this moment.
So can we, is it okay if we table it then for the next council meeting?
Um, it would be our, like, let's, uh...
I think we can bring them in?
We can. We do have the ability to bring them in. By Zoom.
I think so.
Yeah, cause I think, I think, uh, the public deserves to know who they are and what they've done. For example, like how we had our, um, we did, um, Renaissance Downtown and ICO present their, their cases before us.
Their, their experience, there, there's a snapshot of their experience in the staff report. Page, uh, 21, I think. So, no, it's, there's some, there's a discussion of their capacity in the staff report.
Okay, and if, and if they're right on board, then there's, there shouldn't be any more extensions. Just keep going with the, with the timeline we provided.
Mr. Phil, let's bring this back home. I think that, what I sense from the council is that there is capacity for Lincoln Properties to certainly under, undergo such this monumental task. However, the nuances and kind of the lag time, this is now the Third Amendment to the ENA, that's troubling. I mean, if I were a voting council member here, I wouldn't say, I'd say no. I'd question it to death because the, the original agreement extended twice. Two agreements. Two, two, so, attachment two, attachment three, we've given it to you. We've given you a lot of rope to now provide something to the community and you're not... performing. So the only consternation that I think the council has is on you. Your inactivity to either leverage the deal, broker the deal, bring members to the count, to, to the council, um, and, and provide a thorough presentation of who Lincoln Properties is. So that's troubling. I mean, there is, there is cause for alarm that we're not getting the, the material before us so we can make a good decision. Now, my, my position has always been that Lincoln Properties, I've vetted them, I know of their caliber, I trust them, I, I understand it. My continued concern is, why then do we have these other two partners? I don't think there's a, a very good, maybe Mr. Monti's here? Sir, grab the podium mic. Thank you. Great to see you tonight. Push the, there you go, sir.
Thank you, mayor. And, uh, sorry, I can't see everyone here, so, uh, I, I just wanna go back to the original-
Would you identify yourself, sir?
Donald Monti, a member of RDICO.
Thank you, sir.
And, uh, just wanna go back to Councilman Reynoso's initial comment as to, uh, did we sell? We didn't sell anything. I think if everyone were apprised of what's gone on over the last six months or even a year, it would be very helpful to the council and the mayor to know what took place. That being said, if we look at the ENA, one of our, not an option, it's almost a requirement that we bring in national developers to work with us, whether they be project joint venture partners, whether they be vertical participants, this was a requirement of ours. So what I'm a little bit confused about is, I would assume that that would be a celebratory occasion for the mayor and the council to know that we did bring in someone we were entrusted to do. So we weren't entrusted to sell, we weren't entrusted to get out, we, I think we moved mountains to get where we are in terms of, I, I can't control what happens on the part of the city, I can only control with Gian what happens on our part. And I think we did our job, so I'd be happy to answer any further questions, but no, we did not sell. No, we have no intentions of, but the point being, we were required to do what we're doing. And if you look at the ENA and our performance schedule, it clearly states that.
So then, Mr. Monti, why do you need to be involved? If Lincoln Properties has been identified in the third ENA as the party that we wanna play ball with, why you? Why are you still involved?
Well, when you say the party you wanna play ball with, why, are, are you saying that you would like us to be out of the deal? Or if we have nothing to really say going forward from a development standpoint with the city manager?
No, there was a question, Mr. Monti.
Okay, what is the question?
It's a question, why, why then, what, why do you need to be involved?
Well, because I put three years of my life into this to help create this. I'm not in the business to sell things. I'm in the business to make things happen, and I think we did our job to make things happen. I guess I would reverse the question. Why would you want us not to be involved? That's what I would wanna know.
Well, thank you. The burden's on you to provide convincing information why you still need to be involved.
No, it, it, I don't know why that's a burden.
It's not gonna be a back and forth.
No, but I, I'm, I'd be glad to answer any of the council persons. Why is it a burden for me to say that I performed, brought in a national developer to become our partner? Why is that bad? Please, somebody-
It's not, it's not a problem, Mr. Monti, thank you. For the sake of housekeeping, I'd like to motion to continue this to the second meeting in August so that it gives time for the city manager to educate everyone on the dais who would potentially vote on this, on what the heck this is.
I just wanna make sure-
It's not enough time?
Okay, there's a motion, I'm sorry, hold on, Mr. Sanchez, there's a motion to continue it? Is there a second?
I'll second to continue.
There's a second. The motion qualifies. And Mr. Sanchez, you'd like to speak to the motion?
Yes, um, so the second amendment, uh, had a first and second extension, the second extension goes until when?
Goes until September.
Okay, so in that time, what I, I envision happening is we'll bring Lincoln Group at the next meeting, they'll, they'll woo us, they'll tell us, hey, they're gonna build this enormous, beautiful project in downtown, we'll bring them on, um, and then we'll begin the negotiations. And the reason why we're gonna need that two components of a hundred and eighty days is because essentially we're gonna be starting with a new developer. And the, the mayor, despite the fact we disagree on just about everything, is right, I'm not sure there's a need to have that, that essentially an appendage with, with our first chosen developer. But, you know, if they wanna, if they wanna participate and help push this project forward, I, I don't think it's a hindrance. But we need to be convinced, uh, by Lincoln. And I, we've had, I've had conversations with the city manager and the, our economic development director, and they couldn't be happier with Lincoln Group. But go ahead and convince this council and the public by bringing them in at the next council meeting, again, we'll be convinced, we'll be happy that they're on board, and then we'll begin that arduous year of negotiations with them for the sell and development of the Carousel Mall.
Is that a motion? Is that a motion?
No, there's a motion on the table.
That's exactly what it is, I just wanted to talk.
All right, that's his commentary. Mr. Shoret, go ahead. Mr. Mayor? I just have one question, is Lincoln gonna be at the table after we go through all these iterations? Are, are they, uh, gonna be still interested in, in participating if RDICO isn't part of the team?
RDICO will absolutely still be part of the team.
Right, so, so that's what, all they're doing is bringing in a, a third partner that's gonna make this project happen.
Again, Lincoln would be the prime developer, RDICO would be their, uh, in essence, their silent partner.
And I don't see a big problem with this, personally.
Okay, guys, why don't we do this?
Well, wait a minute.
There's a motion to continue it.
Right, but, but-
Go ahead, Mr. Shoret. Well, I, it, what, what does continuing it do to any of this? Does it, by a couple of weeks, does this have any impact on, on anything?
Well, two things, it solves the issue of LP not being here because that person is the-
Well, I understand that, John, thank you very much, I understand that, but-
So that's the, that's the main reason.
Is, is that, but does, is there anything else, any other urgency? I mean, you know, I, the, these types of things don't just pop up overnight. I've been going through building a house for three years. And, uh, things change as we go along and, um, talk about extensions, talk about changes in cost, chat, talk about changes in materials, talk about things that you can't control. So everyone's asking for this to happen in six months, I want it in six months, or I, or no extensions. Well, then what do we do? Then what do we do? We throw it all out and start all over again? So I, I, I understand my colleague's concern and knowing who Lincoln is, and if we can wait a couple of weeks to have them on a Zoom or in, in the office, I, I can support that, but this is something, this is, this, we've been working on this a long time and we're getting close to really getting some things going. And extension, there will be more extensions, I would bet. Some of us won't be in office.
I would, I would, I would have some, I would have some concern with going too far, too, too much further forward on these discussions, so let, let's have Lincoln come in as soon as possible. Bringing folks like that in, you know, they, they chose to come here, um, through the, uh, through efforts by Don Monti and Gian Torkin, which is a really advantageous thing. This is the point that we needed to get to.
See, I think that's what my question was. Would we even have Lincoln if it wasn't for these guys?
I, not that I'm aware of. So, I mean, that, and again, the deal between Lincoln and their, and RDICO, that's their business. I mean, they have, we, we are kind of in a, we'd be inserting ourselves inappropriately, I think, into the relationship between the, those two entities, uh, if we demanded some, you know, that there be some sort of change in their relationship. That's not our, that's not our place. And our goal is to redevelop the Carousel Mall property. We have never been this close. We've never had the capacity of something.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Torkin. Sorry, I didn't see you standing there, Gian, go ahead.
So let me just clarify-
Sir, identify yourself.
Gian Torkin from ICO Realty Group. So essentially, what we've done, it, you know, from the dais, it, it might not seem like there was a lot of work being done, but there was a lot of work that was done. Part of our job was to set things in place to attract national developers. We've spoken over the last few, you know, since we've gotten this RFP, since we've been able to put the, the things together to attract a national developer. And we finally did attract the national developer. We've attracted a few, Lincoln being one of them. And I think it's critical, this is the second largest apartment operator in the country, and we should be absolutely pleased that we've been able to attract them. We didn't attract them to the RFP because not every component was in place for them to be attracted to, to this project. And it took a lot of hard work to put those components in place, to give the vision, to be able to bring them into this project. And there's gonna be other developers coming into the project in the future. This is a huge project. And I know we want expediency on this, I know we wanna push it quickly. In fact, I think Robert, Rob can, can indicate that we've actually been pushing to get this done quickly. The only reason why Lincoln is not here today is there's one main person that's been working on this project and only on this project, and he was tested positive for COVID this morning, and we advised him not to show up. We believed that he would be able to speak through Zoom, and then we found out that that's not allowed anymore under the new regulations of the city. So I really think, and I'm somewhat surprised because, you know, we've been working so hard to bring a developer that's familiar with this, with the inland empire, that has a vision that the city wants, that has the capabilities, that have all the components that we wanted at the table, and you have a city manager that's vetted this significantly for you, and you're looking to just move along at this point. I'm actually pretty surprised. This is a big project for the city, this is not a project that gets done quickly, there's a lot of things that need to happen, there's still a lot of challenges that need to be overcome for the project to be feasible, and this is the process that it takes. I mean, real estate projects in California take a long time. Even the entitlements won't be done in time for, for us to move forward quickly. So I understand that we wanna make it happen quickly. If you look at the schedule of performance, that's, and we're not starting from scratch. There's been things that have been done up to now, it just requires more time. The only thing that's changed here is rather than having those three hundred and sixty-something days in the DDA, it's being put in the ENA. And a part of that reason is that we've come to understand that there are some legal reasons why we should not be signing a DDA at this point until the project is entitled. And so, otherwise, we could be planning a DDA and moving forward. There's really no difference between an ENA and a DDA. If you look at the schedule of performance, you see everything that's, that would happen in a DDA is now happening in an ENA process. And so, you know, honestly, at this point, I throw my hands up, I think I've done my job, I think I've brought the most capable developer to the table, it's up to the city to either let it go and start from scratch.
Mr. Torkin, let's bring this back home. The motion is to just give us a little bit more time. We're not saying no, but we're not saying yes tonight. What we're saying is give us more time to vet it. There's a motion on the table, there's a motion to continue it to the second meeting in August. Any final comments or questions, otherwise we'll call for a vote.
Yes, yes. Can I ask exactly what it is that we're vetting? Exactly what it is that the council needs to vet? I, I believe that we've heard from, um, city manager, uh, we've heard from Nathan, we've heard from Gian, we've heard from Don Monti, these players have been in the game from the, from the beginning. What exactly is it now that we need to vet? The Lincoln Group itself, or I, I'm just not, I'm not sure right now? And because, and because if, if it's just, if it's just communication that was, that needed to be provided to the council, I do understand that. So, but we do have the ad hoc committee that is, that is here, excuse me, sir. We do have the ad hoc committee that is here, and we are not stating or giving any reason for, for there to be more question. The, the Lincoln Group, we can all also verify now that you have the name of that developer and look at, and vet them yourselves, look into the background. We, we don't want to continue to give developers the, the, the belief that it is very, how difficult it is to get something done here in the city of San Bernardino, and with a project this large and having a developer of this capacity, we need to move forward tonight.
Ms. Calvin, uh, there's been systemic failures on the updates. Originally, uh, when this came before the city council, the directive from the city council to then city manager was that there be a every ninety day, in fact, I think you even suggested every thirty day report issued to the council. That has not happened with consistency, regularity, and, uh, you should be above all familiar with this issue. In fact, you're one of the ad hoc committee members that's on the inner circle, so to, to, to somehow come off that you're not surprised, well, you're on the inner circle, you get those updates regularly, you know about Lincoln Properties, you knew about Lincoln Properties on or about June first, when it was introduced in the ad hoc committee. Many of these council members up here don't have and are not privy to a lot of the information that you, Mr. Shoret, and the other council member who's on that committee received the update. So that's why we're vetting it.
I have a question.
Ms. Ibarra.
Yes, uh, when was the last time that the subcommittee met with the developers?
Was the middle of June.
I, I thought there was no meeting.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to continue. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
A point of clarification, this is continued to-
Yeah, thank you. Point of clarification.
Second meeting in August, sir.
Second meeting in August, so we can, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not expiring the, the negotiations, yeah.
Uh, that's the motion, so.
We have a council meeting-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, council members, council members, please.
Wait, it's first meeting or second meeting?
First, we have a council meeting, first. I'd like to amend it then, that we bring it back to the first meeting of August.
I'll second.
It's an amendment to the, the motion.
I'm out of town for the first meeting in August. I would, so, second meeting, but I, I, I'm, I'm texting with Steven Lindgren right now, he may be able to be in here.
Mr. City Manager, timeout, we're winning here, just relax. We, we have the time, this ENA is not expiring, it, it doesn't expire till thirty days after August, the second meeting in August. So we're gonna be fine. So that's the second point of clarity. Mr. Reynoso is request, and the motion was by seconded by, uh, Ibarra, to extend it to the second meeting in August.
No, first week.
Well, Mr. City Manager can't do it. You wanna withdraw your motion?
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my motion, second for the first week of August.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. I'm sorry, hold on, let me try to manage traffic here. So the substitute motion now, uh, is Ms. Ibarra, you're suggesting now the first meeting in August? Is that your motion?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second to that?
No, that was a motion, substitute motion by councilmember Calvin, and I seconded.
What's the original motion?
First week of August.
Is the second meeting in August.
Okay. Is there, is there, because you withdrew your motion.
And staff is nodding their head that they can't be here and they're not here for the first meeting in August, guys. So let's work with staff.
Do we need the city manager? We have an assistant city manager.
I'd like to make a substitute motion. That we approve this tonight and move forward. I mean, this is exactly what we're talking about. Everyone's talking about more time and everyone's asking for more time. Makes no sense. It makes no sense. So, all right, so- So I'd make a substitute motion that we move forward with the recommendation tonight. Well, the chair will recognize only Ms. Ibarra at this time. Ms. Ibarra, you finish with your recommendation or your motion?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
What's your motion?
To bring it back, first week of August.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a second for the first meeting in August. So the next council meeting, let's not be complicated. All right.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a request also, please?
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, the only thing I would like to do is-
I'm sorry, Ms. City Attorney. I'm sorry, Ms. City Attorney.
I think you're in the middle of making a motion. We, we had a presentation. I think you, you need to vote. With all due respect to our applicant, we do have a process and you're interfering with that process right in the council.
All right.
I'm sorry, that's, we have to follow the rules.
All right, so the motion is to bring it back at the next council meeting, which is the first meeting in August. There's a second. Any final comments or questions before we call the roll? Okay, so Ms. City Clerk, help me, please. There's been an alternate motion by Councilman Charette.
And seconded by councilmember Kelvin.
To approve it tonight. All right, so we'll, members, we'll, we'll cast our votes on that. If that fails, then we'll proceed on to Ms. Ibarra's recommendation to bring it back for a two-week vetting process. Members, we'll cast our votes as a roll call vote on the item before you by Charette and Kelvin to pass the staff recommendation tonight. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Question? Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
No.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
No.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-3 with councilmembers Ibarra, Reynoso, and Alexander voting in opposition.
Okay, I'll, I'll veto the 4-3. So it's back on the motion. The default is the motion before us to bring it back to council, the next council meeting. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Charette?
No.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
No.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
A motion passes to bring it back to the meeting in August with councilmembers Charette.
The first meeting in August.
Sorry, first meeting in August. Councilmembers Charette and Kelvin voted in opposition.
Very good on a 5-2. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to.
We can still bring Lincoln Group to come and give a presentation. I would like for the public to be aware of their capacity.
I think they should be here, Mr. City Manager, so. Okay, this is item number three, annual increases per bargaining unit MOUs, correction to reclassification of deputy director of public works, city engineer, and the city clerk agreement. Mr. City Manager, sir?
Yeah, the staff report on this will be provided by Barbara Whitehorn, agency director of administrative services.
This is mainly a routine matter with the MOUs from last year, which were approved by council. This is a continuation of those memorandums of understanding with each of the bargaining units, where we're enacting the cost of living adjustments in each of those MOUs. It is also a correction from the last council meeting to the range that was approved for the city engineer. The range that was brought before you was incorrect. So this also includes a correction to that range. And I apologize for that from the last council meeting.
Okay, is there a motion?
Oh, and the city clerk, I apologize, the city clerk's agreement that you approved in closed session at the last meeting. Sorry, I forgot that, even though it was in the title. So, sorry, it's getting late.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion before you?
Mayor, if I may, we have to read out the terms of the agreement.
On who? City clerk?
For the city clerk.
Or the city engineer?
The city clerk employment agreement.
As she's doing that, just remember, state law requires when you enter into an agreement with an executive that you have to read out separately the terms. And those executives would be city manager, city clerks, and city attorney.
I will read them into the record now. So we are moving the city clerk's compensation to the midpoint of the new compensation range. And the compensation range that we're adopting is based upon the class and comp results. And then also a modest increase in severance for not-for-cost termination up to a maximum of six months after two more years of service. And redirecting the employment agreement to the new executive resolution plan where all the other executives reside. And that, that concludes the oral report.
Great, thank you, Ms. Evelyn. All right, members, you have the recommendation before you. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All right. Any objections? None. I hear none. So ordered, item number three. All right, let's move on to item number four, Carousel Mall demolition professional services agreement for 24/7 security services. The recommendation there before you, twofold, and we will turn to our city manager, sir.
Staff report on this will be provided for us by Daniel Hernandez, the agency director of public works, operations, and maintenance. Daniel.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Before you this evening are to the two recommendations that the mayor described. First is direct city manager to prepare and issue the necessary documents for the demolition of the Carousel Mall through a design-build contract. And second is to authorize the city manager to execute a month-to-month professional services agreement between the city and Redwood Private Security for a 24/7 security patrol of the Carousel Mall. So prior to taking action on the recommendations, I'll provide some background and information on the two items. The mall, a 43-acre property located in downtown, was open in 1972. By the 80s, the mall began to decline, and efforts were made to rebrand the mall as we know it now as the Carousel Mall. By the 2000s, the anchor stores began to close their doors, leaving the inland tenants in the mall. And after 45 years of operation, the Carousel Mall closed its door to the public in 2017. Although the closure impacted the community, it's created a new opportunity for growth and development in downtown, which was tied to the earlier item that was discussed by the director, the agency director of economic development. This, this property has been identified as one of the main catalysts for future revitalization of downtown and is of key importance to the city's future success. However, in its current state, the Carousel Mall has become a health and safety burden on the city. Transients have continued to intrude through the doors and through the roof, causing structural damage to the building and removing wiring and valuable items in order to collect money for salvaging. In addition, the recent May 20, 2022 three-alarm fire inside the mall created more structural damage. In the past 12 months, three fires reported caused by transients. Vandalism and breaching of the property creates costs and potential liability to the city. Over the last two months, staff has spent over $10,000 in materials and after-hours calls, which result in overtime on securing the building after it has been breached. This total excludes the amount of staff time during the regular workday to address issues, which distracts from the day-to-day duties. According to our facilities manager, employees spend approximately 25% of their time addressing the issues associated with vandalism and breaching of the mall. The time spent on the mall takes away from valuable resources from, from the city to address maintenance and repair needs through our current occupied buildings in the city. Neighborhood landlords have also raised concerns about the condition of the mall and its impact on, on their properties. As staff, we recognize the condition of downtown as a collective responsibility of all landlords. And by addressing the condition at the Carousel Mall, it will help mitigate some of these concerns of neighboring property owners. With that said, staff strongly believes that the demolition of the Carousel Mall is a viable solution to prevent safety and health concerns, eliminate the need to allocate valuable city resources, and reduce and eliminate the cost of maintaining a vacant building. The demolition of the Carousel Mall may also help facilitate, incentivize, and expedite the future development of the site. In order to expedite the demolition, staff recommends the preparation and issuance of documents to facilitate a design-build contract pursuant to the city's municipal code, chapter 12.21. And if authorized, if, if authorized by the city council tonight, a request for qualification will be issued. Staff will then evaluate those responses to determine which firm would be invited to participate in an RFP process. From that, staff will then evaluate proposals in response to the RFP to determine which firm is best suited to deliver the project effectively and efficiently. Upon evaluation, staff will return to the city council to request the award of the design-build contract. Proposed timeline was provided in the staff report, which shows the issuance of the RFQ being released on July 26th and for us coming back to the city council on October 19th to award the design-build contract. With this said, the city council may opt not to proceed with the demolition of the Carousel Mall at this time. In that event, the demolition of the mall will be addressed as part of the development efforts. In parallel to the demolition, staff has also recommended 24/7 patrol of the mall due to the aforementioned vandalism and trespassing. Staff solicited four informal proposals for security services to patrol the mall to prevent unlawful activity on a month-to-month basis. The proposed service is for a three-shift patrol of eight hours each. So we will have a morning shift, a midday shift, and an evening shift. The first shift will be patrolled by one officer in one vehicle, while the two remaining shifts will be patrolled by two officers and one vehicle. A table of the proposed monthly totals were provided in the staff report and range from $36,936 to $228,107 per month. So based on the review of the proposal, staff recommends that the mayor and the city council authorize the city manager to execute a month-to-month professional services agreement with Redwood Private Security. Although, although Redwood's proposed rate is $2,848 higher than City Guard, staff believes that being based in San Bernardino and their familiarity with the city best suits them to meet the city's high expectations. Their, their patrol will focus on problematic areas to prevent access and vandalism. In addition, each shift will conduct one interior sweep of the mall to remove trespassers, which is currently not being done by our current contractor, which is not part of their scope of service. Redwood will work closely with staff and the police department to safeguard the building and the grounds as best as possible. If this contract is authorized, Redwood would begin on August 1st. Staff, and staff anticipates that, that the contract continuing through the conclusion of demolition. Lastly, the city council may choose not to authorize the security contract and instead continue with the existing, much more limited security services, which we believe is to be ineffective. That concludes my report. And myself and the city engineer, Mr. Alex Kishner, are available to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right, the motion is there before you, council members, items one and two. Is there a motion?
Who to approve?
Second.
I have a question first.
Right, question?
Can we have a question?
I'm sorry, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Charette. Ms. Kelvin.
Mr. Hernandez, thank you so much for that information. This is also to city manager field. I just need to understand the fee for the demolition was to be part of the ENA, correct?
That would be our intention, yes. Now, no, none of these actions, by the way, commit any money except for the security, but that, it would factor into the discussions on the, on the.
It was factored into the sale.
Purchase price.
It was, it was factored into the sale. Yes.
It was going to be, well, the original intention was, the reason we're bringing this forward now is that we're concerned about the condition of the building and the hazardous conditions that are being created in it. And the hazards also to buildings next door, like the Harris's building and the Andreessen, I'm sorry, the Enterprise building. So our intention with this is to accelerate the demolition. So we pay for it and get reimbursed through the purchase of the property by hopefully Lincoln Property. So that, that's the intention.
I understand, but the original question was that it was, it was part of, it was to be part of the sale, correct?
It was going to be a responsibility.
And now we're moving forward, and now we're moving forward due to the amount of vandalism that is taking place inside of the Carousel Mall.
That is correct.
Okay. And then we will have that, the fee for the demolition then will be built in to the sale with, hopefully.
That's correct.
With Lincoln.
That's the intention, yes.
That's the intention. Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm trying to get the, the security aspect here, and thank you for your report, I appreciate it. I'm just trying to get the security part here. So we're going to pay, does, well, let me go back. Doesn't Platinum already, doesn't Platinum already provide security for the mall?
They do, but at a very minimal capacity right now. So they, they are also responsible for our other government buildings. So they only do a one-stop in their shift to check the perimeter.
So why are we just not extending them a little more? Extending our contract to them a little more than what they already have instead of hiring somebody new? And, and, and two, they're going to be, this extra security 24/7 is going to cost us $477,420 a year.
That's correct.
Where, where is that coming from?
We're going to have to find that in the city's budget. We don't really see that we have much of an option. There's no other alternative to providing security. And we're causing, there's a significant problem with the condition it's in now.
Mr. City Manager. Mr. City Manager, can't we book this on part of the ROPS, Department of Finance, as an expense, since this is former, former RDA property?
It's actually been transferred to the city. We, we, look, we will be exploring options for both paying for the demolition and for the security. So a short answer is yes, potentially we can. We've already had those conversations, so potentially yes.
So, because I'm trying to figure out if we're going to spend close to a half a, because I don't know how long this is going to take to demo, right? No, no one here can give me an answer. Since no one here can give me an answer, how much is it going to cost or how long it's going to take to demo the mall? Then physically, it's going to impact something else in, in our city budgets. Trees, streets, roads, something is going to, is going to, is going to lose out.
There are actually different colors of money available to us. Mayor pointed out one of the, one of the specialized sets of money that does not affect any of the general fund-funded efforts that the city engages in on a regular, on a regular basis. Yes, in terms of how long it will take, we have to get past this point so we can get out and see how much it's going to cost. We don't know the actual cost because we haven't been to work out yet. The intention would be that the 24/7 security would then be, responsibility would be passed on to the demolition contractor as part of their contract. So the sooner we can get to demolition.
Is that, is that in your report? Did I miss that part?
So that is not a part of the, that's actually was one of my response. So in terms of the fiscal impact, we currently have security services budgeted. So if we're able to execute on this schedule, there will be a budget appropriation that's needed, but a smaller impact because we currently have $800,000 budgeted for our overall services. So there is no immediate impact. Their services will be able to pay under our existing line item in our budget. However, because of the, this increased scope, we will at some point have to make a budget amendment. But at this current juncture, we have sufficient funds in the new budget to cover the costs associated with this request.
So we have funds in the new budget to cover this cost?
Yes, however, the, we're going to outspend what our budget is. So at some, at some point, we'll have to come back for a budget appropriation. But to the city manager's point, we will include this in the, in the part of our RFQ/RFP process so that it, the, the cost is passed on to the developer. Obviously, it's a higher proposal amount because they have to factor that cost into what they're providing. But in, in the interim, we have sufficient funds in our current operating budget to absorb this. But once we bring all the items together, because we don't know how long this is going to be, so it's.
My, my point exactly.
And at this point, it would be inappropriate to ask for the full amount because we may not use the full amount. Right? So we have sufficient funds to get, to get us through October. And at that point, when we come back, we would understand what our shortfall may be.
Okay. But please, in the future, let us know a little ahead of time what, what you're going on, which especially impacts other areas and aspects of public works or any other department libraries or whatever, because it, it matters.
Understood.
Okay, members, oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm hearing two things. I'm hearing that potentially, security services is going to be passed along to the demolition company. But in the staff report, the verbal report, I'm hearing that it was going to be provided through the conclusion of the demolition. That's, I heard that in the, in the verbal report.
So that is correct, that it, the security services will be throughout the process.
Okay, but we won't be footing the bill.
Exactly.
Okay. And so then obviously, we would withdraw providing security service or paying for it once the demolition begins. The problem is, we don't know when that's going to happen. Another thing that we don't know is what, what potential roadblocks could, you know, that we don't know about that could potentially stop it from even moving forward. And then we'd just be providing security indefinitely. Is there anything that we can foresee that could be a potential problem with, with starting the demolition?
So we, at least in the initial staff's perspective, we don't, to get us through October, we don't see any, any issues. Obviously, once a demo firm is on the design-build contract, they're going to do those environmental assessments. And, but at that point, that then takes the course of the project. But to get us to where we need to be in order to release the document, to bring it back before the city council, we, we see this as a pretty straightforward process. So we don't really anticipate, and the beauty of our contract right now is that it's on a month-to-month basis. So the termination allows it, and the contractor is fully aware of that. And they've accepted those terms. One of the firms that was on the list basically only told us that they could only enter into a one-year agreement because of the initial startup costs. But Redwood has indicated that they have the, the staff, they have the vehicles to be able to absorb on a month-to-month contract.
It's a 43-page exhibit on pages 39 through following. It clearly gives us those options and severability. So it is a month-to-month, or it's a one-year, and we're good to go.
And then finally, if it is in the interest of getting this done as soon as possible, I, I would encourage we explore the option of allowing 24-hour demolition as, because it isn't in a, in a residential area. Would we be able to waive the, the restricted hours?
So we'll evaluate our municipal code. Downtown, obviously, after hours, there isn't a lot of activity, so I mean, this may be low risk. But we'll have to verify that with our municipal code, work with community development and making sure that we're not violating any ordinance. and making sure that we're not violating any ordinance.
Well, there is a municipal code that says you can't swing a hammer before 6:00 or after 6:00 p.m., so we'd have to contemplate it at that time.
But that's, that would also help with, in terms of being able to.
Get it done faster.
But we'll, we'll explore that as part of the RFP process.
Okay, I would recommend that.
All right, thank you.
Let's get it done. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Members, catch your votes. Let's take a roll call.
Can I have a question? Just the difference between Redwood Private Security and Platinum Security right now? What is the, the only difference between those two companies, the contract? Is it, is it that, okay, so you, are there, they're all, they're both doing the perimeter, correct, of the Carousel Mall? And is Redwood having access into the Carousel Mall? Because that's where all the fires are starting inside the building.
So, currently, Platinum just does a perimeter sweep and reports anything that's happening. They do go on the inside when we request them to go on the inside, but that's not part, but when we request them to go on the inside, it takes away from their other, their other routes that they're, they're doing. So, they're on a scheduled route, but if we ask them to go into the mall, then that detracts from the current service that's provided. This is specifically dedicated to the Carousel Mall, and they will actually go inside three times a day to basically shoo away whoever's not supposed to be there, which is currently not happening.
That would be helpful, yes, because I remember there was a fire that happened, I want to say early June. I drove by and I saw Platinum Security doing their perimeter of the Carousel Mall, and then within an hour, I got notified there was a fire that started inside the mall. So, that's why I'm asking these questions, because a lot of the people that are starting these fires are breaking in from the top of the building, on the sides, and starting their fires.
So, there's going to be a lot more access point, obviously, a lot more, they're solely dedicated, so they're going to make a lot more rounds on, on the building. So, you know, one of the challenges that we have right now is the facility's really large, right? It's really large. So, when they, once they go to one side of the building, you lose visibility to the other side of the building, right? So, they're going to do more regular, because that's, they're only, that's the only service that we'll be providing, and in addition to the interior sweep, which I, we feel is going to be an extreme benefit to our, that service that's being provided.
Because for the money that we're paying them, I just, I hope they're able to catch all the entryways.
Ms. Barra, thank you. We'll call, we'll call for the question here, there's been a request, just call a roll, please.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherret?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
No.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Wow, thank you, council. That is, I'll buy you ice cream after this, that's great, council, we've got something done here tonight, thank you. Sir?
Ryan Stanley of the Enterprise Building, directly touching the Carousel Mall property. Just speaking on Platinum, they don't really come to us, they ignore our calls. We'd love something else, please.
Thank you, sir, all right. All right, let's move on to, this is item number five. San Bernardino Active Transportation Plan, so very comprehensive.
Approved.
Oh, great. To suspend the hearing, great, okay, suspend presentation. There's a motion and a second, approve, the staff recommendation. Any final comments or questions? All right, members, any objections to item number five? Any objections to item number five? Seeing none, hearing none, so ordered. Item number five is approved. Thank you, thank you. And I want to compliment the community for, especially, I know that Councilman Figaro and the Third Ward was very active, engaged, and encouraging people to comment throughout our community. There's multiple, over 200 comments on the Active Transportation Plan, and I was very, very amused and pleased by our council and our community by providing these comments in both written and the public forums, and so we thank you, and we thank our consultant very much, thank you. All right, at this time, I am going to go ahead and depart tonight's meeting. You have my aforementioned council conflicts, and so I will continue that and leave the room, and good evening, and thank you all. I'll hand it over to the Mayor Protem.
Mayor, he's going to need the remaining speaker slips. Okay.
Okay, so we're moving on to consent, correct? All right, we'll go up the line here. Councilmember Sanchez, any pulls?
Yeah, the repaving of the parking lot, 16, and it's just a question.
Okay.
Or comment. Can I make that now?
Yeah.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, we're repaving part of that parking, that parking space over there. If in fact, that whole parking lot belongs to the city, I would ask that we make every effort to get that paved as soon as possible, whether it's through this or contingency.
Are we talking about Villa Senor?
Uh, yes, sorry. Yeah, yeah, the Villa Senor branch.
Okay, we're looking.
Make every effort, honest effort, I'm sure you will.
Not a problem.
That's it, that's the only comment I have for that.
Okay, so it's not pulled, okay. Councilmember Ibarra?
No pulls.
None, okay, I have none. Councilmember Sherret?
None.
None, Councilmember Reynoso?
Number 32.
32, Councilmember Kelvin?
None.
None, and Councilmember Alexander?
Nay.
None, okay, we have a motion to move the balance. Councilmember Sherret?
Second.
Second.
I didn't hear the, the second, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kelvin.
Okay. May we please have a vote for the balance?
Councilmember Sanchez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherret?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
And then, Mayor Protem, we are continuing item 20 to the August 30 meeting.
All right, so item number 32.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mr. Kishda? What do I have to do to get the storm drain on the Capitol Improvement Plan, the Verdemon Storm Drain?
The Verdemon Storm Drain, that is what we talked about, which is the Myers, the Channel, this is, is going to be an RFP, that is, we need to have a consultant to come and evaluate the whole thing. So, we are, we are in the process of preparing the RFP, just like we have not yet finished it at this point of time, because there is a lot of information need to be get into it. But we, we are working on it, and we hopefully that will get that RFP out before the end of the year. But we working on it.
You've told me that for a long time.
I completely understand, but there is a lot of issues that goes into this for the study, because it's, it's going, a long, you know, a huge area that needs to be studied, so we can make sure that we're addressing the right problem.
Yeah, okay, well, I trust you to get on it. That's, it's significant, it's huge, so it needs to be acknowledged, and it feels like it's not being acknowledged.
Believe me, it is acknowledged, we're talking about it, we get the emails from, from Mitchell about everything that we have, but you know, it's just like, we need the time to put that document together, and to be a very solid document, so we don't have any issue in the future, when we have a consultant on board that can do that for us.
Sooner than later, please. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Okay, I have a lot of speaker slips here, so, Ms. City Attorney, do I do this speaker slips first, or do I continue on to the items for future meetings, since that's?
My understanding, those speaker slips were related to public comments for items not on the agenda, so you could complete the agenda and then go back to that.
And then move on to this, okay.
Do you recall what item that was?
No, I don't have. Is this, okay, yeah, it's, yeah, go ahead, please.
Good evening, actually, good night. My name is Ronald Donnis, I'm a resident of the First Ward, Haynes Park neighborhood. I came here to speak about item 36 on the agenda, somehow I'm here a couple hours later. I just want to first start, I do want to start about our police department is shooting a community member in the back. The council has asked for patience and transparency, which I agree, but the police department has been slow to respond to a state audit, pointing out racism in the department. I did speak to the police chief, he says he, the report has been responded to in an address about three weeks ago. The department is not releasing the response. I am going to follow with the city clerk's office and the California State Audit, Jurors' Office, who got that response, to try and get a copy of it. I suggest you do the same, as this document and the recommendations that the state made have a credible bearing on that recent shooting, and also on item 36, and where we saw a lot of people come out here to speak about the treatment of the street vendors by police. Again, our department has been called out, and you heard the speakers come out personally about how they feel about being overpoliced, and how aggressively they're going after the street vendors. This is why we need a center for the street vendors. So, they, and again, I don't know if some people didn't understand, because a lot of it was in Spanish and in English and stuff, and I know some people behind me making some comments. What the vendors were saying were that they, there is processes, there are clinics like at the Mexican consulate, but there were, all the departments didn't show up, or they would provide information, they weren't getting the help they needed, or there wasn't information in a language that they could access it. So, definitely, we need a center for them, and the whole, why is the burden on the city or on itself? There's a burgeoning arts scene on the city of San Bernardino downtown, a lot of young artists. Part of this art scene is the street vendors. There's a lot of gastronomic wonders on our streets, a lot of great places that serve great food that get thousands of reviews. They don't have their own place, but there's a different kind of culture, something different that's going on on the streets of San Bernardino, and stamping it out is not the way to go about it. We need to embrace this. We want to clean up our streets. Street vendors are a lot better than what we've seen before. These are not the people that should be targeted by police action, these are compliance issues. There shouldn't be any police out there. It should be code enforcement officers, civil officers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number, to items to be considered for future meetings. Item number 36, Councilmember Reynoso.
We heard a ton from community members today, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. We'll proceed to, to the vote.
Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherret? Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and then item number 37, Councilmember Alexander.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for the council. Just recommendation that, that our fleet become compliant with a green fleet, that we try to move our fleet to other than fossil fuels for the city, to be, to be a leader in the, in that particular area, that's all.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Councilmembers, please, catch your votes.
Councilmember Sanchez? Councilmember Ibarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Councilmember Sherret?
Yes.
Councilmember Reynoso?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelvin?
Yes.
Councilmember Alexander?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so then we're going to wrap up with the final public speakers here. I have Juan Turan, is he present? No. Robert Porter, followed by David Friedman. Mr. Porter.
Mayor Protem, council, good people. Waited a long time to do this speech. I just wanted to mention, first of all, that, you know, with the street vending stuff, we use a big stick, but maybe we should use a little carrot. I was thinking that maybe there's some way we could do some type of free enterprise zone that would have like, all three, an insurance person, someone who would give them a permit for a day, and someone who could do the county permit for a day, and then they could practice and see what it's like, and then maybe do it again the next week, and then at that time, you could show them the process of getting, you know, a year-long permit and the benefits of doing that. And the other thing was, is that maybe they, they don't have some of the equipment necessary, maybe we could buy some of that, and, and say, hey, if you guys do get a permit, then you can get this free handwashing station. Or, 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 you know, give them a little carrot, right? So, there's a few things that, that I'm looking at there that, that we could embrace them, because eventually, if they do come into the fold, then we get those tax dollars and those permit fees, and it helps the city altogether. And maybe then that would give code enforcement more time to go look for the errant political signs that are all over the city littering, and especially from our mayor and in the Second Ward, Terry Elliott. Those signs are everywhere, those things need to be picked up. That's just awful, that's litter to me, that's littering. And if they have the time to put those things up, they should be able to go and pick them and take them down. I don't understand that. Then the Arts and Historical Preservation Commission, we're doing a great job, we're, right now, we're, we're working on getting the monuments fixed. So, if you know any historical monuments throughout the city, they're, they're working on that process. I want to thank the city manager and the director of Parks and Rec for working that out. We're going to get the Veterans Rock fixed, and then the angel on the west side that the wing's broken off, we're going to get that fixed. So, we'll get some of these monuments looking good. And the other thing I'd like to mention is that we're charging fees to artists to show their art at our events, and if you're a poor struggling artist, it's sometimes very hard to, to come up with the money for that. So, maybe there's, like, maybe we could set aside, like, some monies, like, maybe $10,000 or $5,000, that would pay for them to get their insurance and their permit, just to show their art. Or maybe they're doing a live performance, or maybe even to the extreme, let them sell their art and make a little money, too. That money, some of it, the fees would end up coming back into the, to the budget anyways. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have David Friedman, followed by Tansu Philip, followed by Phil Ugaldi. Any of them here? Ryan Stanley? No, I don't know what the first name is, last name is Wright, Chachi Wright? Followed by, are you Mr. Wright?
Right.
Okay, please.
Okay. Didn't think this time would actually ever happen. As you can see, the room is completely empty, so I don't care about platitudes or accolades. My name is Chachi Wright, I am the San Bernardino Branch President of NAACP. I came here primarily to be in support of the people who are outraged about what happened to the young man this weekend. Our condolences go out to their family deeply. We've got a lot of calls about this, I mean, a lot, way more than any calls or situations that have happened. People are extremely upset about this incident. Chief Goodman, you know, I've always been in support of you being here. Councilmembers, I've always been in support of you guys, but this incident has a lot of potential to go the wrong direction if you aren't being extremely transparent and very communicative with the community. I've already spoken to our legal chair, you all know Mr. Hardy Brown, he will be down here barking at y'all if we don't get some form of communication. I spoke with the family today, and they felt like they weren't getting the information that they needed back from this leadership in this community. So, I wanted to be clear that the San Bernardino NAACP has been here, and we will definitely be much louder if we don't get the results and the justice and unity that we need for our community. This is a very, very sensitive issue on both sides, and we can't just brush it under the rug and say, oh, we're just going to support the chief, because that's what's good, because the people in the community are hurt by this. I grew up in this, I came up in this very city, used to come to this library, read every day, and to see. And to see stuff like this happening, seeing young black men gunned down, shot in the back, or brown brothers and sisters getting vilified and treated like criminals because they're trying to make a living, that's not what this city is about! So I'm just encouraging everyone to really, really process that it's not just us versus them, or we're trying to avoid a lawsuit. We got a bigger responsibility than that. We also just want to definitely put that out there. We're encouraging everyone here to come out to our event this Saturday. It is not driven toward a rally or a protest, it's just a community event, just to have everybody, it'll be at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church on the west side of San Bernardino, right across the street from the hospital. And just come out and just show that you're for the community, and not just here to push agendas and look the part. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Luis Ojeda, followed by Kristin Malapi, followed by Edwin Johnson. Mr. Ojeda.
Thank you, I was about to leave, it was a long meeting. Well, thank you, everybody. I wanted to have the opportunity to speak in Spanish, but everybody left. So today was very interesting to find out that some people finally realized that there's street vendors, Mr. Reynoso. I mean, it seems like you're so disconnected with this community. I mean, for four years, me, we are the change, and many of our volunteers have helped them reach out to the county, to the city. We helped to pass the ordinance to be allowed to have street vending. But everybody talks about the police, try to make them a criminal, enough is enough. Well, it sounds good, it sounds good, but at the end of the day, when do apply, when do we apply the rules, the regulations and the law, when? Because we came out with Ed B. Food Fest for the same reason. They told us, we don't have a place to do illegal street vending. And then, why don't we get a place? Oh, yeah, okay, so who's going to get it? You, and I did. And we spent a lot of money, we got the permits, we got the insurance, we lobbied the city, we were doing our events every week, every Saturday for over a year. And many of the vendors that were here tonight, okay, they were invited to participate. And then I was the bad guy, why? Because guess what? I asked for permits! Oh my goodness, even you, here at the DICE, accused me of stealing from them. Whenever you want, I can take you to my accountant to show you how I spent in the last three years trying to help our people. Because it's easy to be emotional, and enough is enough, and they're taking advantage of our people. How about our pallet people? Remember last time, you want to demonize them, they were causing fires? They need help too. How about the truck drivers? You pick on them all the time, there are people too. So why? They're small businesses? You know what happened with the law in California, that everybody needs to be now their own little company? The extra burden to spend just to run a truck? Those are the things that I want you to see and look. We, look, in the business world, if you don't know, if you don't make money, that's a hobby. You're in the wrong business. If you don't have a permit, if you don't have the money to get a permit, okay, to get the equipment, then you're not ready to be in business. And I support my brothers and sisters that wants to be legit. But tonight, I talked to many of them, because I know them, and I say, look, while you're asking for it, we already have it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ojeda. Next, we have, finally, we have here Kristin Malapi, followed by Edwin Johnson. I don't see anybody here, and then Councilmember Ibarra, I think you had a speaker, a note, or a letter, something that you had received.
Yes, I got an email from one of my constituents, Sean. She says, dear city council, as a resident of the city, I wish to thank the San Bernardino Police Department and San Bernardino City Code Enforcement for checking the sidewalk vendors for the proper permits per our city ordinance. Curious as to the permitting process, I did some research on the pertinent government websites and found the following information, both in English and Spanish. One, San Bernardino County Health Department provides a comprehensive checklist specifically for food carts. Two, city of San Bernardino, under business registration, has sidewalk vending information sheets and permit forms. Three, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration covers information for obtaining the required sales tax permit. I support entrepreneurship and applaud those individuals who have done the work involved to acquire and maintain the proper business permits and insurance to be sidewalk vendors. As a reminder, the residents and established business owners of this community collectively requested through the city council to have the police and code enforcement contact the sidewalk vendors to make sure they are in compliance with our city ordinance. As such, residents and business owners alike, we need to show our support of the work being done by these departments, so the city council knows that as a community, we are in agreement that the sidewalk vendor or city ordinance will continue to be upheld. Sincerely, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you. And then it was brought to my attention that we have emailed public speakers, so I'm looking for the name on here of who to call. Is it Melba? And then we have notification at civil, and then, okay. Melba, please.
Hello, city mayor, council, city members, and general public. My name is Melba Parada, and I'm a business consultant with the Asociación Emprendedores. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with the mission to educate, motivate, empower, and develop the leadership skills and business acumen of the Hispanic community in the United States through the execution of eight business models focused to guide the participants in the creation of their own individual business projects and microbusiness. Our Emprendedores program has been recognized through the region as a runner-up program for cities, communities, and agency by the country of Riverside, California during 2019. Our organization, Asociación Emprendedores, has received recognition by Assemblywoman Ms. Eloyes Gomez Reyes, Assembly Majority Leader of the 47th District for our participation in educating more than 100 street vendors through the ETP seed program on July 2021. We are the only 100% Spanish-speaking platform that provide this important service in the region through the countries of San Bernardino, Riverside, and Orange, having graduated as a Monday, July 11, 2022, more than 860 participants since 2016. We try to provide free service through our one-on-one business consulting. We support entrepreneurs to achieve their dreams by willing them on how to open and establish their microbusiness. We want to commend the city of San Bernardino, California, for the support we have received through the CBD grant. This has allowed us to provide this important service to more than 80 residents since 2020. We of course want to continue receiving your support and continue providing our service in this great city. As you might know, our founder and president, Monica Robles, is also the co-chair for Uplift San Bernardino Small Business Resource Group, working along with Ms. Karen Suarez, the Uplift San Bernardino Director, and other important partners. She is also part of the team of Recast Your City here in San Bernardino, working tirelessly to help right vitalizing geographic section of this important city that is between East Street and Marshall Avenue. As you know, she's very passionate about helping the community at large as well as our monolingual Spanish community in particular. My personal experience, like a business consultant in Asociación Emprendedores, and having seen so many entrepreneurs complete the permits, it is to understand that everyone can do it if they have the correct information and accompaniment. This is about, I think a lot of information is missing, and they don't have the correct leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Miriam Nieto, followed by Freddie Gomez. I'm not sure if any of those two are on either, not, not here, okay. Freddie. Nobody stood up, so, okay. We'll go ahead and we'll move to adjournment. The next joint-
Mayor Protem, we have one speaker.
Oh, okay. Please.
Art Rubio, if you can unmute your mic and address the council, you have three minutes. Arturo Rubio? Arturo Rubio? He's not responding. He's not responding.
Okay, the next joint regular meeting of the mayor and city council, and the mayor of the city council acting as the successor agency to the redevelopment agency will be held on August 3, 2022, at the Feldheim Central Library located at 555 West Sixth Street, San Bernardino, California 92401. Closed session will begin at 5:30 PM, and open session will begin at 7 PM. Everyone have a good evening. Have a good night.